And moved by Director Hillenbrand, seconded by Director Bassett?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you. Director Bassett?
Thank you. So Chair, I would like to add on our work session agenda, a discussion about the superintendent's evaluation.
Okay. Is there a, so?
And we can discuss it after.
Okay. We have a move to approve the agenda, but your second is contingent on it being adding that to the agenda.
To the work session.
To the work session. Is that all right with you, Director Hillenbrand?
Well, I mean, it's.
For approval?
Well, we can wait till I pass the motion first to say we're going to approve the agenda, and then, but why approve the agenda? We can just amend it.
Exactly. So, Director Hillenbrand, that's acceptable. All right. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the agenda with the addition of a discussion of the superintendent's evaluation.
On the work session.
On the work session. And this is a voice call. Yes?
Clarity for tonight's work session?
Tonight's work session.
You're not talking about the actual evaluation, you're just talking about
Absolutely.
The process, or the timeline, or the formatting, or something like that?
Those things, because as you know, we typically talk about those things at a different time, and we have not done that as yet. And as we have the superintendent's evaluation coming up this month, I think on the 16th, it's only fair to our new directors, we have two brand-new directors, and we've never gone through the process, and so to do that would be good.
Uh, Director Bowman?
I don't have enough information to really unvote on that piece of it. I am interested in knowing what's lacking, what has not been presented, and I don't think that that's part of what we're discussing here at the table. I mean, if I, if we want to add the item to the agenda that's just the general evaluation process, that's one thing, but it's my understanding from my own attendance to the meetings and the other things that I've been to, that the evaluation process was approved by us almost a year ago, with along the way with work six months ago. I know we have two new members, but, and I don't mind looking for clarity, I just don't want to go looking for things that aren't there, and I don't want to chase after sort of allegations that we haven't done a due diligence, or something's been missed in the process, because I don't agree with that. So that's my concern right now.
I'd like to clarify. This would be to discuss how we came to this format. This was all decided upon last fall, but just to inform the board about the process, and so that there's an understanding of what was already decided and what we're going to be doing, correct?
And Chair, thank you so much, but this was my motion, let me just speak to it. The fact of the matter is, is that historically, we always, the board as a whole comes together and talks about the elements. We did have a meeting back in September, as you know, and we talked about elements and those kinds of things. We were scheduled to have another discussion about it in May, this past May. That did not occur, and so, well, what I read, and so, I mean, I don't want to debate it now. I mean, we're just talking about, let's just make sure we have new directors, everybody understands that we're clear on the process, and what prompted this also is that I got a revised document. It said revised on it, and I looked back at the original document, and I just think just for us all to be clear about what that is. There's nothing mystical about it, it's just to review the documents, we've always done that, so, and we have two new directors, it makes sense to involve them in that process.
Okay. What was revised was just the timeline, none of the goals, none of the.
No, no, we're going to look at the documents that we had before, we're going to talk about the processes that we're using, and we're going to have agreement on that. And so whatever director's questions that come forward around that issue, we'll talk about. It's not controversial, it shouldn't be controversial.
I just don't want us moving the goalposts.
Well, that's a different conversation. If somebody has, if somebody looks at it and has something that is coming to their attention that they want to talk about, I assume they'll do that. That's not what I'm suggesting here. I'm very clear about what I just asked.
Okay.
You know, and so I see a hand.
Okay. Director Long?
Yeah, so just kind of point of clarification, we're asking that this be put on the agenda, we're not having the discussion about it right now, so can we, you know, vote on whether or not we're going to add it to the agenda, and then go forward with the discussion at the appropriate time to have the discussion on that? I think that's very appropriate.
Great idea.
Thank you.
Director Bowman?
I can fully support a discussion as to the process and the procedure of what we're doing around the evaluation, and I would appreciate if we could put a time certainty to the discussion, such as 10 minutes, it shouldn't take us more than 10 minutes to get through the information that's already been worked on, decided upon, and bring up any pertinent points. So I would hope that we could add a time certainty of 10 minutes to this.
Time certain of 10 minutes? Director?
The last comment that I will say is that, as you know, I did send a note to you saying I thought the agenda for the work session was too long, and one of the things I hear all the time, I'm not the one always saying it, others say it all the time, we should be doing board work. Board work, one of the most important and singular things we do is hire a superintendent and evaluate the superintendent, that is one of them, and the budget, those are the two most important things that we do as a board. And so, excuse me, and so, if we're talking about time certain, if we have this as one of the early items on the agenda, and I, I'm not, I don't think we need to talk about, I mean, we can just generally talk about, let's try to be timely, but some of the other things that are on there, I don't, you know, I'll just, we'll say more than that. I'll just say this is board work, it's happened for the 23 years I've been here, we've always had a discussion together as a board about the elements, we have two brand-new directors who've not been through it, and in the end, the last time we had the mid-year and just checked on things, I'm just going to say this, one of our directors got up and walked out.
Okay. I think we should vote whether or not we're adding this to the agenda, and I would like to be clear, we are, we cannot change any of the elements at this time.
Well, somebody revise it, I'd like to know who did that.
I did.
Who? I did. Oh, well, let's move on.
And I guess the other thing I would just like to offer is, I believe you were referencing something that happened during closed sessions, so I don't think that's public knowledge.
Thank you.
All I said was, can we talk about it?
Okay. So, all in favor of approving the agenda with the addition of talking about the superintendent's evaluation? They say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say nay. Okay. We will add that, and we will put it as number nine. Moving right along.
Excellent. We are delighted to have students with us tonight as we do some celebration of Ardell Proud. Principal Phelps from Zachary Lane has a whole team with him, who is going to inform and share information with us about the Junior Master Gardener Program, and we are so excited to learn. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to you, Principal Phelps, thanks for being here, and to your honored guests.
And we're going to hear from them shortly, because they've got things to say. So thank you for having us, I really appreciate you giving us the time and the invitation to do this, this is something we're really proud of at our school. My understanding is that we were also going to do the land acknowledgement and the mission statement as well, so if we can have that, thank you. And I'll just read it, normally we would ask for volunteers, but I think it's just easier to do it this way. "We acknowledge Robinsdale Area Schools is located on the homelands of the Dakota and Ojibwe people. We recognize the painful history of genocide and forced assimilation of the indigenous inhabitants of this land. We honor and respect the many indigenous peoples who live on and hold sacred these lands, and we stand with members of these nations to fight injustice in all of its forms. We uphold the preservation of Dakota and Ojibwe languages, land-based education, and tribal sovereignty. And the mission of Robinsdale Area Schools is to inspire and educate all learners, develop their unique potential, and positively contribute to their community." And I feel like that's what we do, we are going to contribute to the community. I, when I was thinking about this, two of the places within the subsections after our mission statement talk about strategic partnerships and student engagement, and this Junior Master Gardener piece hits those right on. We have some partnerships at our school already that have been kind of longstanding. Fifth grade has been partnered with Northrop Grumman for a number of years in part of the STEM education that we're providing, and they give us some great resources. Fourth grade this year just partnered with Dyken, which is also a local business, and that's been a fantastic addition to what we do. Our family and community PTA is a strong partner, and they work with us in a lot of different ways to support our school and our students, and we have a mass of community volunteers that come in and help us. This green team is what we're going to work on tonight, or talk about tonight. This is a partnership with the Hennepin, Hennepin County and the U of M Master Gardeners, the, I'm going to come up with the better words for it, but they have partnered with us in making sure that what we are doing aligns with our curriculum, and it fits with the bigger picture, so that's, that's what we're going to get to. This all started a number of years ago. In 2019, we got a grant from Seven Dreams, which has supported us a number of different times, and these raised garden beds were built by former ZLE parents Scott Stover during the pandemic. So this is a way for our kids to get hands-on and get back into doing things together. Some of the first crops were planted in 2021, and families will actively, you can't just plant a garden and then expect nothing to happen, you got to weed it, you got to water it, you got to stick with it all summer long. And so our families would sign up and come in and tend the garden all summer, even when we're not away, or even when we are away. Oh, this is not the order I was expecting it to be. Okay. So in fall of 2021, we had a story done about us with CCX, and I'm not going to play the video, but that is certainly available to you, which talks about the addition of these and the, the work that the kids started doing when they stood, when they get to harvest some of the first crops, and kind of get really excited about that. So we are cultivating good growing habits. We got a second grant then, we decided this is really taking off, this is something worth seeing and growing, so we got a second grant from Seven Dreams that included adding a pollination and a sensory garden, and the sensory garden feels a certain way, smells a certain way, some of the things you could taste, which was a great thing for a number of our students who have some sensory needs. And as well, the Kindness Rock outdoor space, all the students were involved in decorating rocks to add the Kindness Garden to that. Another community partnership was with Josh Daniels, he's a ZLE student and an Eagle Scout, and for his Eagle Scout project, he started to contribute to our outdoor classrooms. So he created 30 benches, the benches were then painted by Zachary Lane students, fourth and fifth grade Zachary Lane students, along with Armstrong High School art students, so they came over and painted with us. That was a great day, and worked in the hot sun to keep those, get those things painted, but the messages were all, you can kind of see the little puns there, were planted here, or a number of those, and I'm not sure who came up with those, but great, great slogans on the benches. So where we are now, we have some budding scientists with us here, and in just a minute, we're going to hear from them, some of their own messages. All K-5 students have at least three lessons per year with the Master Gardeners who come over and teach these lessons. It's aligned to the standards, the partnership with the U of M Arboretum in Hennepin County, these are some of the green team here, but some of those people that come over that are the Master Gardeners are former parents, some of them are volunteers, they love coming over to see what we're doing, it's just taken off. So we're going to hear from our students here. What I want you to know is this, these students were chosen because all of our students do this, but these students give up recess time to work in the gardens. Say that again, they give up recess time, they could go play outside on the equipment with their friends, but when I noticed, I was looking at who's signing up, they sign up again and again to work in these gardens. It must be making an impression, so I'm going to have them come up, Frida and Kason and Brooklyn and Violet. Will you come up? We're going to use the microphone when we speak. Yep? Got it. Right up here, right here Frida. Right here, so you can see your message? Together, and we're going to get kind of close, there you go.
My name is Frida, and I go to, I go to ZLE, I'm in second grade. In the Grow Lab, I have learned that fruits and vegetables are very important to the earth. If we do not have fruits and vegetables, then we would not be very healthy eating junk food. Fruits and vegetables keep us healthy, they give us nutrients. The reason I like the Grow Lab is because they teach us all about plants, how to grow them, they teach us all about what plants need and what they don't. The people teaching at the Grow Lab are great adults, I think the Grow Lab is a great way to learn about nature.
It's a great second.
My name is Kason, and I'm in third grade. The reason why I like the Grow Lab is because they grow plants, and me and my mom and my whole family likes plants, and they also help the earth. We, and plants help us breathe with oxygen in the air, and that's why I like the ZLE garden.
Hi, my name is Brooklyn Hanskevin, I'm in third grade of Zachary Lane Elementary. I'm here to tell you about Zachary Lane School Garden. I love working in the garden, I, I love working in the garden so much, I'd skip recess for it, and that's exactly what we do. The Master Gardeners show us how to work in the garden, for example, planting seeds, picking up sticks, and my personal favorite, digging for worms. Kids of all ages like helping in the garden because it's also helping nature. We get lanyards with magnifying glasses attached to them. The coolest thing I've ever found with my magnifying glass is a caterpillar. I, I'm proud to be a Zachary Lane student working in the Zachary Lane School Garden. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Violet, and I'm in first grade, and the reason why I like being in the Grow Lab is because I like planting seeds and vegetables.
Hi, I'm Jenny Ellis, and I'm in second grade. I have been with the green team for as long as they have started building their, what they called crypts, the kids who came back from COVID, came and they saw the boxes all built and didn't know what they were going to be for, but once they found out, this is where we're going to grow our vegetables, this is where we're going to learn about our earth, this is where we're going to apply our science and our reading and our math skills, all come together interdisciplinary ways. They are super excited, they cheer when it's time to do explored learning, it's just wonderful to see the excitement. We, I used to walk my kids past the garden, and it was hard not to go by without touching, without smelling, without looking, without trying to take a bite of that ripe tomato they went by, but it is bringing together all the priority strategic things that you are working on, the A, the academic awareness achievement, they are bringing all their knowledge together, how to take care of the earth as an extra bonus. B, they're being engaged, they're being well, learning how to eat good vegetables, they know where they come from, they want to taste them, we had taste tests, they loved things they didn't even know they could love. C, we are collaborating with people, we're communicating weekly newsletters so people know what's going on. And D, we're developing learners, this age and this age, so we're having a wonderful time with it, and glad that it can keep going and growing. Now, we don't want you to forget us, so we have something for you, so you will not forget us. These seeds are forget-me-not seeds, go ahead and deliver it. As soon as you plant them, please come visit our gardens, and then as soon as they bloom for you, please come back and see how our garden has changed and grown as yours. So we appreciate your.
Thank you.
Time and encouragement.
Thank you.
That's so sweet.
I got one.
Thank you. Director Bowman, did you get one?
No.
And I think we're going to have the kids come back, we're going to get a quick opportunity here with our superintendent.
Thank you so much for being here.
I can't wait to see your gardens and see how everything has been planted. What a fun way to learn and to actually enjoy what you're doing every day. So I've got some certificates for you, that for now, I'm just going to give you one, and we'll make sure you get the right one.
I'll screen them off for you.
Those shoes.
I love my seeds.
Oh, we have a question, Director Bowman?
I do have a question. I just have a quick question.
Mr. Phelps?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to know if I could get somebody's email address so that I could plant my flowers and take pictures of them and send them to you, so that you would have a record of, of what happened after I got a packet of seeds, I have pollinator gardens at home, so.
Okay, send them to our principal.
I would love to send you some pictures.
Send that, send it to me, and we will have it up on our TVs, we love, in fact, when, this is super interesting, but we did the same thing with our kindergarten, we had a kindergarten night in May, and we sent home these little seeds, and said, "Plant them and send me the picture," so we can have them there for the first day of school kindergarten, "Grow with us," and, yeah, "Grow with us," so send it to me, Matt Phelps at Ardell.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was amazing, now try to follow that superintendent.
Yeah, there's no way that's going to happen, great job. Thank you very much for being here, and thank you all, good evening, board members, Sheriff Evans Becker, and all directors. Robinsdale Area Schools, our mission is to inspire and educate all learners to develop their unique potential and to positively contribute to their community. Tonight, I'd like to share some of the work in which all of us sitting at this table have been engaged. In the strategic priority theme of academic achievement, graduation season is here, and it is the highlight of the year. This past week, we celebrated students from every corner of our district, from adult learners at AAP, to our young adults at RTC, to the high school graduations from RBA, Cooper and Armstrong. Each ceremony was a powerful reminder of the public education is all about, helping each and every student grow into their full potential. Our graduates came to these milestones from many different paths, and we are proud of every single one of them. In this photo, the AAP graduation was equally inspiring, whether earning a GAD, recovering credits for a diploma, or completing a paraprofessional training program. These adult learners reminded us that it's never too late to reach your goals. At RTC, the celebration was filled with love, joy, and pride. The students have worked hard to build independence and are now moving into community life with new skills and confidence. And of course, our RBA, Armstrong, and Cooper ceremonies brought out the full celebration of the class of 2025. Families, staff, board members, and community members gathered to cheer on graduates as they crossed the stage, each one carrying their own story of resilience, hard work, and achievement. We're incredibly proud of our graduates and grateful to the many staff who supported them along the way. These moments matter, and they reflect the heart of who we are in Robinsdale. Across the district, the end of the school year was filled with powerful, joyful moments that marked transitions, celebrated relationships, and honored growth. Every school found a way to close the year in a meaningful way. Meadow Lake hosted a vibrant all-school celebration that brought families, staff, and students together. It was a beautiful reflection of the relationships that have grown stronger over the course of the year, and a reminder of how important the sense of belonging is. We saw similar moments across all elementary and middle schools, events that reminded us of how our students have grown and how deeply our community is connected. Our graduating, whoops, I think we're back. There we go. Our graduating seniors revisited elementary schools in camping gown parades. For example, seniors returned to RSI, and they walked the same halls where their journey began. They were cheered on by younger students and former teachers. For our younger learners that planted a seed, this is what I'm working toward, and for staff, it was a full-circle moment of impact and pride. We saw a similar spirit at Sonnason, where fifth graders handed down their Sonnason spirit to kindergartners by gifting them with small bee stuffies, a sweet tradition that honors where they started and how far they've come, from one hive to the next. The bee pride lives on. The bee pride lives on. As we closed out the school year, our schools created powerful and joyful traditions to mark students' growth and transitions. At Noble Elementary, students proudly participated in the first annual improvement parade, a creative and meaningful way to celebrate personal progress. Students carried signs highlighting what they had improved on the most this year and families lined the school to cheer them on. It was a great way to recognize effort, growth and resilience. At the School of Engineering and Arts, we celebrated fifth graders with a heartfelt moving on ceremony. Families, staff members and students gathered to honor this key transition and Mayor Rosalyn Harmon joined as a guest speaker to offer words of encouragement and inspiration. It was a proud moment for our students and a memorable day for the entire C community. And these are just some of the great end of the year events. Tonight, I was hosted, or earlier today, I was hosted by our RSI at a fancy lunch. So, that was a really fun way for me to spend my lunch today. To staff, we want to thank you for these memorable moments. Your care, creativity and commitment are evident in every detail and your impact on students will last far into the final week. In the strategic theme of student engagement and well-being, last week, our Indian Education Program hosted its annual honoring ceremony, a powerful evening dedicated to recognizing the accomplishments and cultural identity of our native students. This event is more than about awards, it's about affirming the presence, strength and future of Indigenous learners in our schools and communities. It's events like this that deepen student engagement and connection and remind us that when students see themselves reflected and valued, they thrive. In the strategic theme of collaboration partnerships, this last week, Robinsdale Area Schools had the honor of participating in the 2025 National Community Schools and Family Engagement Conference, held right in Minnesota. As part of the event, Cooper High School and Robinsdale Middle School served as official site visit locations, welcoming nearly 90 educators, administrators and community partners from across the country. They are two of our designated full-service community schools and the visits gave attendees a firsthand look at what equity-driven, community-centered education looks like in action. At RMS, I was proud to welcome visitors alongside our full-service community schools coordinator, Nisha Smith. Together, we shared how we're reimagining what schools can be by placing students and families at the center of every decision. These images captured just a portion of what made the visit so powerful, authentic conversations, community partner engagement, student voice and school pride. Staff from both buildings helped make these, these visits meaningful and memorable and our community partners played a critical role in showcasing how collaboration leads to real impact. In the strategic theme of staff investment, each spring, we take time to recognize the incredible contributions of our staff through our years of service and retirement awards. These moments allow us to pause and reflect on the commitment, care and consistency that our educators, support staff and leaders bring to our schools every day, year after year. This year, we were especially honored to celebrate Susan Manikowski, who has given 55 years of service to Robinsdale students and families. Susan is currently at Cooper High School and has been a steady, caring presence across generations. Marcus Han, our 2025 Teacher of the Year, leads the band program at Cooper High School with passion, precision and heart. He's known not only for his musical expertise, but also his ability to inspire confidence and creativity in his students. His classroom is a space where students find belonging, challenge and joy. Kelly Larson exemplifies what it means to show up for students with consistency and care and kindness. At Fair School Crystal, she brings her full heart to the role of education assistant, supporting students academically, emotionally and socially. Her present helps create a positive, inclusive learning environment where students feel safe and, safe and seen. Proud to recognize Kelly as our 2025 EA of the Year and that former slide recognizing Marcus as our 2025 Teacher of the Year. As I end my first academic year in 11 months as serving as your superintendent, I feel humbled and awed with the incredible responsibility and privilege I have to serve this school district as the school ends. Being with students and families and staff yesterday, being in our schools a lot throughout the year, as we end this year, I've absolutely fallen in love with Robinsdale Area Schools and I'm really proud of the amazing work that we are collectively doing in service to our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Great, comprehensive, good heavens, busy time.
Yeah.
Wonderful things happening. All right, let's move on to number five, the legislative, legislative report, a report from our LAC with Executive Director Anthony Williams.
Good evening, Sheriff Evans Becker, Superintendent Stallow, members of the board. Yes, I'm here to give a brief update of our legislative platform and what we currently know at the legislature, as we, as many of us know that they are still in, they haven't called a special session yet, so the session ended without much resolution. On the purpose of this presentation, you know, is just to update the Board of Education and the community on the district's 2025 legislative platform and the outcomes of the legislative session. As I referenced already, the session, we're waiting for a special session to be called to tie up things this year. If, just a brief recap, we had two major buckets when it came to our platform. One was around maintaining and, you know, increasing the formulas to ensure districts have adequate funding. And our other priority was enhance educator workforce or, just quick, I got some. So, within the funding component of that, we wanted to, we asked for fully funding of extended time, increase the funding to cover the cross subsidy for SPED and ELL, as well as increase the Safe Schools Levy and allow for more flexibility. And then we asked for MDE to maintain, I'm going to enhance teacher work pathways. We knew earlier in the year that there was a deficit projected, you know, at the state level. So, we met with myself and Dr. Stallow and I think Amy went as well, Executive Director O'Hern. And we went to the State Capitol on AMSD Massa Day and we met with Senators Ann Rest, Bonnie Westlin, as well as Representative Cedric Frazier, Mike Fryberg and Jeanne Cleavorn to just discuss our platform, but also to recognize that they had a long and hard session ahead of them, knowing that there wasn't a huge surplus this year as we had hoped for. That being said, you know, we still shared our thanks and appreciation for the years of support that they've given to, to Robinsdale and to school districts, you know, around the state and understood that they were once again in a tough situation. So, that was, there were some of our advocacy efforts that we had taken on. And, you know, as I mentioned in when I first opened, the session has adjourned on May 19th without a approved budget, but they are working towards, you know, some, some resolution. I got an update today from Massa that they, there's some language that has been, has been not passed, but has been agreed upon in the sessions and we're waiting on the government to announce a special session to see if that bill is officially passed. One thing I do want to highlight within that robust language is out there is we did ask for, for as far as our platform was the special education cross subsidy to be, you know, more revenue for that and it looks like that's going to, not, not going to happen. There is a language in the current proposal to reduce spending on the transportation for special education, so that will impact us going forward if that passes, this is the way it is. But that is the legislative update as it stands today. We're still really just waiting to see what happens at the, with the final budget or final bill.
Thank you. Directors, do you have any questions? Thank you for advocating for Robinsdale and for the presentation. No questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to number six, operations. District 281, 2025, levy planning with Kristin Hoheisel and Michael Hart. Our CFO.
Good evening, Chair Evans Becker, Directors, Superintendent Stallow. I am actually going to hand this presentation over to Michael Hart. Michael is our financial advisor with PMA and I will be in the, in the background to help support questions as we move forward.
Thank you, good evening, Sheriff Evans Becker, members of the board, Dr. Stallow. Happy to be here with you tonight. So, tonight, I'll kind of start with where we're going to end. We had a lengthy discussion with the school, school district's FAC a few weeks ago on this topic. Ultimately, we're going to share with you their recommendation and kind of an abridged version of what we talked about in relation to levy planning. So, as you know, the levy process, the property tax levy process is, really kicks off in the summer with school administration submitting information into MDE that is, some of it's on a preliminary basis to drive the formulas. It's about 40 pages of formulas and there's decisions that are made that go into that. And one of the first parts of that levy process is in relation to your long-term facility maintenance plan, which will come before the board and needs to be approved before the end of July. And so, that kind of triggered this to be the right time of year to have this particular conversation about planning. And when we look at this going forward, one of the largest parts of the levy for, for many school districts is in relation to, to your, your facilities and the capital part of the levy. So, I think about your levy and kind of in, in a couple of different buckets. One of those buckets is there's significant levy dollars in relation to your operating referendum and other significant funds that support the general operations of the school district. And then there is decisions that have been made to support your facilities. And I know you're going through a process, kind of a long-term visioning process in, in your schools that could have impacts on your facilities going forward and so we're mindful of that in this discussion. This chart is important and this shows, every bar on here shows your debt obligation or debt payments that you have going out for each fiscal year upcoming. And it also includes the general fund levy. There is a portion of money that you bring into your general fund each year to support your long-term facility maintenance program. So, that's money that's restricted for facility maintenance, that's the green part of this chart. What you'll see on here is that you have a reduction between fiscal year 2026 and fiscal year 2027 on this chart, there's a reduction there. And that is caused by some of your bonds are being paid off and there's also some adjustments on the, the long-term facility maintenance levy that we expect to see as we go through the process. And so, the discussion we held at the FAC was in order to meet, to, to manage your overall levy and we want to be respectful of taxpayers over time and the investment and contribution they, they make to supporting the school district, whether or not you consider putting an additional levy in place to maintain that property tax levy. And what that would look like is you could do a couple of different options. One of those options would be to increase what we call your pay-go long-term facility maintenance levy. So, instead of doing bonding like we have done, this would increase the amount of money that you bring out and spend within fiscal year 27. So, we're not talking, I know later tonight, you're going to talk about your budget for fiscal year 26. This is really the first action in relation to the budget that you would consider a year from now for fiscal year 27. So, you could, that, that pay-go amount or the amount that you've been spending on your facility maintenance has been one, that 1.872 million. And in order to keep property taxes the same as they are in taxes for '25, as we go into taxes for '26, for payable in '26, that levy could be increased by $2.3 million so that it's, that you have, you know, about $4.2 million to spend instead of that $1.9 million to spend. If you wanted to go even further than that, we calculated for you every million above that would, would, you could choose to do more and that would give you a property tax increase or tax impact of $22 on your average home, which according to Hennepin County is $330,000 in your school district. So, what this looks like, this kind of puts a chart into numbers and, and for those of the, been on the school board, I've showed charts like this many times in the past, this is isolating only the part of your levy that is supporting your facilities, really, the capital parts of your budget. And so, I'm showing here four historical years and these are based for your median home, different types of, of home values would have a different experience, but in terms of that capital portion of levy, if you increase that levy to that 4,172, you could see that the property taxes we'd expect for this part of the tax levy to be the same in 2026 as what is being currently paid in 2025 for, for the school district. So, the, the whole concept here is it provides you some additional funds to maintain your buildings. I know from looking ahead in your board work session, you're going to see a pretty large number in terms of what is an assessment that has been done on your, on your buildings and the hundreds of millions of dollars of potential maintenance. And so, this is sort of a drop in the bucket on that, but by adding $2.3 million, but it's a move in the right direction in terms of supporting. The other thing in terms of the discussion and certainly, you know, chime in, I know a couple of board members were heavily involved in this FAC discussion, but we talked about, usually this time of year, you would have heard from somebody like me about doing a new borrowing and that's not being proposed this year as you're going through this re-envisioning process. And I think we want to be mindful and careful of making the right investment in the right places and it, you know, we're not at the point in time yet where we can, can say that with certainty in your overall process. And so, this is an interim step to something larger in the future likely is, is how that discussion would go. If you said, "Look, we don't want to spend more money on our buildings, what option, other options do we have in terms of maintaining the levy?" If it was a priority to maintain that levy, the other thing that we did discuss was that you have some bonds that are, are called callable, which means that you can prepay them or pay them off early. It's, the school district bond debt is different than a typical home mortgage, which most people are familiar with and most home mortgages is if you have extra money or you, you can make a choice each month to apply that. With a bond, you have to wait a certain period of time that it's been outstanding before you can pay that off early, but you do have some bonds that could be paid off early and we could have the board take some action that would put you in a position to, to pay down that debt early and, and potentially save on some interest expense. And we talked about that, that length at the FAC. Ultimately, after that discussion, the community members that were there with the, the contribution from the broader group, their recommendation was that the board consider increasing the long-term facility maintenance pay-go levy as we have discussed here to bring some additional funds in, knowing that you have a very long list of maintenance work in front of you and this is a good first step to prepare you to tackle some of those things as you move on to, to what's, what's next. And that would come, so tonight, really, it's, it's to, to make sure the board is understanding of this. This would come in terms of formal action as a part of your long-term facility maintenance plan. This would be a part of that plan that needs to get approved and submitted to the state prior to the end of July and then ultimately approved by MDE and put into your levy, which you would see the impact of this when you are presented your preliminary levy in September of this year. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Hey, does anyone have a question? Need clarification on anything? Director Long?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, were there anything that the FAC felt that maybe we should consider besides this pay-go or were there any concerns that they had that were brought up about any of the things that were discussed there? Any warnings for us around this?
We had some discussions and, and Kristin and I had some discussions prior to the meeting with the FAC, if there were other options in terms of what's in within your discretion on the levy, because there are sometimes other choices and the, the LTFM is really the primary place where you have some discretion with where you're sitting right now, you're utilizing a lot of the other sources of funding. And, you know, certainly happy to hear from your board colleagues if they have, if, to make sure I summarize it accurately, but I think, you know, we hit the high-level points of, we discussed about whether, you know, where you're at in the process in terms of, of identifying facility maintenance needs and how this would help further that goal and make the next right investment, given what we know today.
Director Bowman?
Just to sort of be clear, and maybe Ms. Hoheisel can sort of answer the questions. I, I want to just understand the expectations of this points, of this presentation. So, I know we're listening and learning, but then when we get into, as we go into July, are we going to have a, more information added to this or as we walk into July, our choice is going to be the pay-go, a motion to do a pay-go or can you, does that make sense, the question that I'm asking?
It does.
It's a process question.
It, absolutely. So, teeing off the framework, the conversation truly for me was, is it, is it the goal and it, and the FAC agreed to this, is it the goal? Is it the goal to keep the taxpayer experience as neutral as possible? Meaning you don't have items falling off one year, being added the next, so people's taxes are going up and down and up and down. We discussed that at length. Coming out of committee, it was stated that the belief is that we should do our best. And certainly, the recommendation to the school board is they believe that the taxpayer experience should remain as neutral as possible, as not to experience the big ebb and flows because people typically are, you know, happy when their taxes go down, but then if all of a sudden there's an irregular spike because adjustments are made every year based on what you levy and what actually happens, then they're not so thrilled with that. And so the goal is to keep the levy consistent. In doing that, the levers that we have to pull were discussed. LTFM is, as Michael had said, is the biggest, the most prevalent. In what capacity? Is it where do we adjust what we're doing on an annual basis, which is the pay-as-you-go? We currently have a pay-as-you-go levy. We do health and safety projects and different things with that. And just add to that, that would level out the debt slash capital piece of our levy. Michael and I discussed behind the scenes, you know, is there something that we could look at, like our lease levy? Is there something there and maybe do dollars there? And there just isn't a lot of other alternatives that we can use to necessarily keep our levy flat. Now, again, we're talking about a component of our levy, not the overall. If our student count goes down and different things go down, we're not collecting as much money, we're not taxing. So it really is trying to level it out. That's step one. If the board says, yes, it makes sense to keep the levy neutral or do our best, then we move into, and this is the method, then we move into the discussion about long-term facility maintenance and the projects, which is really the first thing you approve in the levy cycle as we move into fiscal year '27. So Michael's presentation, and in absence of a decision, instead of doing LTFM, you go with the road of let's buy down some debts or do some callable debt. If you do that, he's back in front of us, like where there's a formal action. Otherwise, this is a four-year information. As you move into the long-term facility maintenance discussion on some, on a document there, you're ultimately going to need to approve. Does that make sense?
Want to follow up on that?
You want to follow up?
I just wanted to follow up on that, which is, does, is there, is there one way or another, does this allow you more, does this allow the decisions that you make more flexibility as you move forward to the future? I think of that in terms of discussions we've had of possible buildings being closed, that kind of thing. Does this sort of stabilize things out a little bit and allow reimagining to continue? And it just holds us steady? And it's holding us here? Is that kind of the intent?
That's the intent.
That's the intent? So that when we go to make longer-term decisions, we make them from a spot that's been neutralized, as you say, and then we have space to make different long-term decisions if we find that necessary.
That's the intent.
Great, thank you. That answered my questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Director Hillebrand?
And just to, you talked a little bit about the callable debt, and part of the discussion was that we could pay that off, but the interest rates are so low on that compared to what we would get if we borrowed today. It actually would cost us more money to do that, and it wouldn't.
In the long run, if we ended up having to bond for additional debt, it actually might cost us more than what, where we're sitting at today with that interest rate was the discussion and the committee agreed to.
So just in case anybody's wondering why we didn't consider, we did consider that, but why we didn't recommend it.
Director Long?
Yeah, thank you, Director Hillebrand. That was great information to hear. So, yeah, I guess that was what I was kind of looking for in my answer that I asked earlier to hear, kind of if there were things like that that we should kind of know as a board. My other question that I had was, so will FAC then be discussing the exact amount? Because there was talk about a possible additional amount in one of the slides that were there? Or has the amount already been discussed by FAC about what that levy amount would be?
The, what is coming forward as the FAC recommendation is to keep the levy neutral and do that by means, they didn't discuss, like, you could go higher or is neutral in the levy in its total capacity, which then is it not 4 million, is it 5? They didn't get into that finite detail. They're coming forward with a recommendation saying we would, we recommend keeping the levy neutral. We also recommend using the pay-go as your option to do that. That's what they, that's the recommendation coming out of committee. Nothing beyond that.
Okay, so even though there was that option of increasing it, that's not recommended for right now?
It's not that it's not recommended, it's there was no opinion on it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't see any other questions, so.
Great job.
Thank you very much. Very informative. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere, chief. Because you're still up there. Now we're moving into the fiscal year '26 preliminary budget and resolution. Take it away.
So this always gets to be the challenge. Not only do I seem to be, I monopolize a podium for a few months. It's, we're also bouncing between years because as you heard Mr. Hart say, that we're, as we planned for fiscal year '27, we're looking at fiscal year '26 right now, and we're trying to close out fiscal year '25. So it gets to be a little bit confusing, but this is a conversation that we've been having for a while now about what does it look like as we move into next year. One thing that I would like to call your attention to that looks a little different, it is available on the website and to the board members, you have a printed copy, is a budget book. I know that budget books have been provided in the past. This is a brand-new version, and I, it is in draft form. It is not completed in its entirety, but hopefully it helps maybe fill in the blanks a little bit for the summary of presentations that I will typically get. So moving forward, if I'm standing up here giving presentations on budgets, the devil's in the details and this. Again, this is draft. There was hard copies available, but I also know that it is available in Board Book as well.
No?
So the purpose called the '25-'26 preliminary budget? You did not post that. Oh, that's right, because it's in draft form. But you should have a hard copy available to you.
No. Friday.
Okay, perfect.
Was sent to us on Friday?
It's sent to us on Friday. On Friday.
It's a good read. I was hoping you guys had the opportunity to do it over the weekend, but.
I personally would like to have a copy of it in front of me as we make these discussions. Is that possible? We have these intervals. Not. No?
We don't need it for this presentation, though, right?
You do not need it for this presentation. No.
We will get it in front of us for future, but for tonight, we're good with what we have, right?
You absolutely are.
Thank you.
You absolutely are. It unfortunately would have provided some greater detail, but you do not need it for tonight's presentation. So we're going to be going over the timeline, what has happened, the review of the timeline, and the key assumptions in the budget development, and ultimately, the broad overview of the So taking you back to last fall, this is a timeline, again, not necessarily of the budget cycle, but certainly the lived experience of what has happened since September. Moving through, it was when realized that there was a discrepancy in September, October, presenting that to the board in November. And this is for the '24-'25 school year with a town hall meetings leading up to the starting, the develop, developing the list of potential reductions, which was in November of '24. Now, that list of potential reductions admittedly came to you piecemeal. That's how it rolled out. We did then have another town hall meeting to give more of the state of the state and where we were with information. And then March through June, we've been talking about the budget again in its entirety and moving towards the adoption of the preliminary budget. Now, again, the preliminary budget needs to be voted on and approved by the end of the month. It is, if it is not approved, we are unable to continue to pay bills, quite honestly, because until you have a board-approved budget, that cannot legally happen. So back to, again, the process. And this is a process that won't change year to year to year. I want to get to a point where things become very, to Director Bowman's question about LTFM, there just becomes a rote cycle of when expectations of information is being presented and why. Because it's all interconnected, it's just really hard to see that when you're living it until you can take a step back or you've experienced it for over a year. So our budget is based on enrollment projections, budget reductions, and current law and regulations. And again, my apologies, I had thought you had the material. All of that is within the book. You can see what the enrollment projections were or what we've used, the list of reductions. And that includes things like, what is the class size ratio? What is, that's all embedded in this book. Some of the key assumptions, or one of the key assumptions, is assumes 2.74% on the general education formula. This was an inflationary factor. This is our big revenue driver. And there is nothing that I have seen legislatively, even though the session hasn't adjourned, that indicates that's going to change. So that is currently already built into the budget as we move forward and have future conversations once the legislative action happens. We aren't balanced. The information in front of you is not, our expenditures are greater than our revenue. This does not include contract parameters. Now that said, it does include employment steps. So if we have a settled contract already for '25-'26, that is built in, if we, which most of our contracts are not, if they are not settled, it indicates the average employee step throughout the district, but nothing more. So as we move into conversations about parameters, please know that that is not built into the numbers. And then again, the legislative changes are not reflective. So anything that's coming out of session that could impact '25-'26 is not going to be reflective in this budget as preliminary. The overview. So when you are provided an overview, it is saying what has happened from, let's say, '23-'24 actual, and this is my plug to say this is why we want that audit done as soon as possible, '23-'24 actual, '24-'25 revised, and then '25-'26 preliminary. And looking at what is the changes between them, you will see an increase in general education aid. The reason, even though our student count is going up, the amount of aid, as you saw on the previous slide, or, excuse me, even though our enrollment is going down, the amount of gen ed aid by formula is going up. So we will result, or our estimate is still an increase in gen ed aid, even though our enrollment numbers are going down. Increase in special education aid. This is increased cost, where we receive, even though it's delayed, we receive revenue based on a formula allowance of costs. And so as our costs climb, so do our revenue. It's counterintuitive, but again, if you're just separating the categories. Increase in our operating referendum and capital projects, there's inflation factors, that's why you're seeing that. And then a decrease in federal grants, what was reflected in '23-'24 was ESER, COVID money. That money that's coming in, that's falling off, had fallen off. So when, again, when you see this book and can compare the rows of numbers, this is what's going on. As I said, we, it is reflective of employee contracts that are settled and then steps. There is, the budget adjustments that have been presented to date are embedded within there. And then an increase in transportation contracts. Now, this is where it gets squishy, where you start looking and saying, hey, in the presentation, you're going to show that it went down, but we also approved a contract that every year those contract costs go up. So ultimately, there is an increase because of the transportation contracts. So back to the timeline, in March through June, what was presented to the board at that time was the list of what we believed we were going to get out of the reductions that were presented. These were the estimates, and at that time, the range was 15.76 million to 17.76 million. Where we are today with our best actual costing is 15.819 million, which is better than the low, but not much. Not a surprise because coming out of the school-based reductions, you are eliminating people on the lower end of the salary schedule. You're eliminating more of your new employees, not your most senior employees, and so therefore they're making less money. So that, that number and why the range existed, once it played out as we went through the staffing process, that is, that is our estimate as to what was actually reduced. Now to the preliminary budget. And what you see on these slides, again, is going to be in the book. It's going to be on one page, so it's going to be more visually appealing, but I wanted to break it out because in Robinsdale, you're used to approving a resolution. These numbers are how they would look on the resolution and what you see. So our operating funds, what we need to run every single day is what's kind of included in your operating funds, which is the general fund, the food service fund, and the community education fund. And you can see how we project, based on the revised budget, the first column, how we project the end-of-year fund balance to be if those numbers come to fruition. You can see that we're a negative in the general fund, 4.5 million in the food service, and then just under 3 million for community ed. Then add the revenue budget, less the expenditure budget, and the projected fund balance. Here is where the challenge lies, and I'm hoping the budget book helps explain. When you look at that and you say, we are three points, and I'm going to round, 3.4 negative in our general fund. The general fund, when looking at the SOD calculation, the general fund has five categories. It's non-spendable, assigned, restricted, committed, and unassigned. SOD is based on unassigned. So when I talk, we're going to be in SOD in that calculation, it is not taking into account the four other categories, the restricted whatever. This presented as such takes into account the entire general fund. The budget book will lay out what is truly the unassigned and what we expect that. It'll pull out the categories that are restricted, like capital, staff development, those items that need to be set aside, that you truly don't necessarily have working numbers for. So it's kind of an illusion to look at this and say, that's where our general fund is. True, it is in totality, but it's not our unassigned. And then moving forward, you can see that the other funds, even though expenditures are outpacing revenue, still a very healthy fund balance for those accounts. We move into the non-operating funds, building, construction, and debt service. The building, construction, again, that is where our long-term facility maintenance is. I will tell you this, the expenditure just says, we're going to net it out to zero. I fully anticipate that that is going to change. It's just saying, if we believe we have this much left, we're going to get close to spending it all. That's how it's going to look until the board makes decisions on, you know, what does the long-term facility maintenance look like? What projects are we going to do? That sort of thing. That number will change again with the revised. That's why it's so big right now, because it's saying that's, that's what we have available to us. And then we have OPEB trust, other post-employment benefits, that is a trust account, that is money paid out for essentially retiree health. And then internal service, which is, it's not actually a fund balance, it's a net asset, and that is reflective of our self-insurance program. So our health and dental. And then the total of all funds. And so in totality, we are, we are almost a $300 million operation. operation. Where does the money come from? Now this is specific to the general fund. And you can see, back to the revenue breakdown, what are we getting in state aids and credits, what our property taxes support, so back to when we're looking at neutralizing a levy, you know, 24 cents on the dollar of revenue that comes in is what our, is what our community is paying in taxes, and then federal aid and other revenue. And other revenue can be literally donations, gate from events, I mean, various things with the other revenue. Where does the money go? Based on program codes. And again, this will all be in the book, it won't have the cute little dollar slit, but it's going to be listed out in true accounting fashion. When looking at program codes, you can see that 41 cents of this budget is regular and vocational education, 19 cents is special education, we spend 10 cents on sites and buildings, 15 cents on pupil support, and I will say that 15 cents pupil support, that is where our transportation lies. And I'll get to that. So then you can, instructional support is, it's like supporting our teachers, supporting the instruction. District support services, that is where like finance, any, finance, payroll, HR, anything that keeps the district kind of running is what falls under district support services. And then district and school administration are, are your building-level principals, not your APs, but your building-level principals, again, definitions, all in this book. Superintendent, that sort of thing. And then fiscal and other fixed costs are like our property and liability insurance, those sorts of things. Now, object codes. You can see our salary and benefits, and they total 56 cents, purchase services 16 cents. So what do we spend on, things we contract out? What's interesting about this is, again, this is the general fund in its totality. If you break it down and say, what if we pull out some of our restricted accounts? Transportation used to be an account all on its own, and we know the vast majority of that is contracted services, right, or purchased services? What if we pull that out? What is a, what is maybe a different reflection of what's actually going on within our buildings that isn't restricted capital projects, operating capital, or transportation? If you do that, then you're saying we spend 66 cents, or, excuse me, 86 cents on the dollar for people to do that. And, and then, then that's when purchase services drops down, because that takes our construction out, that takes our transportation out, that takes those things out, and you can kind of see. It's just a different look at how we're actually spending the money when maybe looking at some of the unassigned dollars. So, the summary and key messages is, a budget is a budget. It's a, it's a reflection of a moment in time. It can and will change. I have up there, a review of legislative action occurs as soon as it becomes available. Executive Director Williams spoke to what we think can happen, but until that gavel goes down, it's not real, and we sure as heck don't have costings for it, and it's not reflected in any sort of budget or financial projection. When that happens, somebody will be in front of you explaining the implication of what happened legislatively. And then, when it's all said and done, and the board does approve a budget, they will become, all of this will become available on the website. So, questions?
Superintendent?
I just have a quick clarification, thank you so much, Kristin. On the email that you all got, board members got, from Molly on May 30th, under the business meeting, item 6B is the budget book draft. It's attached to that email. And then it says that the budget book will not be posted in board book until it is finalized and comes for action at the business meeting on June 16th. So we'll want you to review that so that you are prepared to take action on that. And it's being shared with you for your review, so you have that in your email. And then there was also the request that if you wish to have a hard copy, to let Molly know, and she would have it available. So if you still wish to have a hard copy of that, we can certainly make that available. But I wanted to clarify, Kristin, you did have all of this to the board members as you indicated. So thank you for that, thank you for your excellent work.
I absolutely have faith that Molly does absolutely everything. I lost a little bit of faith in myself, so I'm glad it's there.
Thank you. I'm looking for questions, I see one with Director Bassett.
So, a couple things.
Hi.
Thank you for this, I like this book. And so the main audience for this budget book is the board, and the public ultimately, but the board.
Ultimately, yes, as we're in, as we're in draft, as we're in, working through it, this is absolutely information for the board. It is, you know, I always view my job as educating, right? Like educating the board, educating the public, and honestly, in absence of me, anybody can explain how, how the budget was built, what was embedded in it, and what happened. That's the goal.
I'm just making sure, the audience right now is, is the board?
The audience right now is the board, correct?
Yeah, and that's, I'm wondering. So, one of the things that I'm wondering about is that, and as you said, we did receive some of the programmatic suggestions, ideas, adoption, whatever you want to call it, we have received some information about programming. You know, some going away, some maybe being revised, all of that. So I'm wondering about, the underlying assumptions that I see here are very helpful, and thank you for providing those, but we don't, there's not one clear spot that I, that really kind of talks about those things. And the reason I say that is that the, the programming adjustments and the gross information that's in here, and the gross numbers are great. They tell us the formula that we're going to use to kind of make sure we walk through the money, as we should. However, the service model that we have, which is a term we've adopted and begun to use, the service model has more specifics in it. So, for example, that presentation that you gave a moment ago, that, some of those information that you provided, and a separate document, if it's not appropriate for this one, it may be a separate document, but a separate document that kind of talks about the underlying programming assumptions, because at the end of the day, I can't look at this and really understand, what did we, what's the final thing we agreed to, or the final thing that the superintendent, that you are recommending, that we do in terms of programming? What is the new service model? And so, perhaps not in this document, but I do think kind of having that all together in a document that we can look at, and we can understand, here's, here's, this is it. You know, because I've seen you respond to some questions, and there's some things I didn't know, and I'm like, oh, good, we have an answer for that. And I'm sure that there's some other things that I maybe not, you know, you've continued to contemplate, when I'm not in those meetings. And remembering that, this community, you've done a very good job of helping us try, I don't know how well we've done it, but try to separate the fact that we're doing, we're adjusting for the past, we're planning for the future, we're modeling for the future, that is complicated. And to the extent that we can kind of see what's the bottom-line impact on service model, you know, that we're talking about, I think would be helpful. And if there are some assumptions that, that underlie that, you know, the rationale for why that is, it would be helpful to have, because first of all, we can help explain it to the community, you know, and then we can ourselves understand it better, because I think this, I like this book, you know, and there's this, and I want to put things in it that don't need to be there.
Yes.
Yes, but.
So, thank you, Director Bassett, because I, I didn't think of that, and I actually think that's a pretty good idea. Because again, if, if we're, if the intent of the book is to indicate what went into the building of, and, and so people can under, I mean, what's in there is terminology, there will be a note section of, back to if dollar amounts change, why did they change? Why did they go up? Why did they go down? There was a curriculum, there's planned, a million dollars in planned curriculum, that's why this budget number went up. The whole intent of the document is so people, it provides clarity to what has happened, without being cumbersome. And so, I think a section on, you know, staffing, I think that, like that, back to, it's draft form for a reason, right? I mean, this is your first look, this is my first run at what that looks like, and so I think that can be accommodated.
Oh, that's, that's great. And, and I'm not, I don't know, I mean, you, you can, you will decide where you think and how you think is best, you know, represented here or elsewhere. But I really appreciate that, because I think the service model is, we've kind of moved along in our thinking about what that means, and we've had a lot of discussion about programs, good discussions. And so, that would really be helpful. So I can just feel like.
Can I just ask one clarification?
Please do.
So, what you were just, this conversation was about information into the booklet?
Well, that's why I asked, I'm not sure, I mean, I think, I'll leave to you.
Okay, okay. I wanted to, so my question was, because I know we've got another run, that last, we were going to be seeking approval on the budget at a meeting in two weeks. So if there's anything, information you need around that before that.
I, that's what I'm asking for, because I want to.
So you want it before that?
I do, because the reality is, I can look at this, and I can just go, oh yeah, this looks, because it does look really nice. However, it is not answering the questions that, that have arisen for me, and I don't understand what that, what this budget means to the service model, the students, and the families.
So, if you look on page one, and for anybody who has it pulled up on their computer, page one, which is multiple pages in, but it is section two, page one.
Yeah, I saw it.
It does have staffing allocations. So there is already a component built in of the service model. Like, it is, now it's just saying, for every 500 students, there's a principal, or, I mean, there's a piece that we can build into that.
I, I agree. And I think some of the things that you talked about even already, and, you know, the thing that you had in that presentation, so as you think about what makes sense to have in here, then in there, what, what doesn't need to be in there, but that will help the public understand, here's what will change. The bottom line is, this will change. The service model will be that we will have, oh, I don't even want to give an example, because it might be, you know, I mean, there's an example that everybody loves, I mean, you know, there's something. So I don't want to just pull a random example out. However, there are services that we're providing that will change in a significant way.
Yes, and so, I think it's a, I think it is a very worthwhile add to the book.
Okay.
In some capacity, whatever that looks like.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Director Long?
So I was kind of wondering about like, community and parent input into our budget, and also wondering about like, FAC involvement in this, and if that would have a place, someplace in that booklet, and how that's, I know we need to come back as a board and have that discussion about how we want FAC to be involved with the budget, but is that a place where some of that information should go to? Because then I'm just kind of wondering, like, how do we get that community input into the budget, and the parents' input into the budget that we are presenting or voting on for the school district? And to wondering how like, FAC's involvement will be in whatever budgets might be coming to the board in future.
Yes. So, the FAC's involvement, and, and that wasn't the case this year, because we didn't have a functional FAC, we were missing board members, and we were following bylaws that, that weren't working for us. Their, their, their capacity into this budget is honestly nonexistent.
That's right.
What it would be moving forward is that the budget assumptions that are listed in this, are we going to assume, again, what is the inflationary factor we think is going to come on the gen ed formula? What do we believe our enrollment is going to be? What do we believe making it up utilities is going to go up? Their involvement in the assumption, absent contract negotiations, because we're not going anywhere near that, is going, they're going to build all of the assumptions that ultimately create the budget. At least come forward to the school board, with saying this is what we believe as we're, as we're actually creating all of the assumptions. That will be the role, so they don't need to be identified, because they will be this, assuming the board, you know, moves forward in that direction of following that advisement. To the component of how were parents and others involved in the budgeting process, again, the revenue assumptions, unfortunately, you know, back to, there wasn't involvement, it was doing the best situation that we could with the information that we had, and, and the, it, it wasn't how it should be. What I will say is, as far as, and I think we've been speaking to this since November, how we were going to be looking at reductions is, we were going to be going off of the, the former parent-community member survey that was used for the '24-'25 reductions, we were going off of the board-approved list of the '24-'25 reductions. And so that was, is what was driving the input into the '25-'26 budget as it relates to reductions. So you kind of have two components, you have your assumptions and you have your reductions. The assumptions unfortunately were standalone, the reductions were based off of prior year input in some capacity.
I guess the other thing that I would add, well, well, Director Long, it wasn't the purpose of what your question is, you know, I'd also offer that the two town hall meetings that we had were an opportunity, not specific to your question in terms of what was the impact or input, but I think it was an opportunity for input, and perhaps moving forward, that's something that becomes part of our cycle, is that at some point in the year, we do a budget town hall to specifically get some of that.
I found great value, I actually enjoyed our town halls, I've found great value in that. So, again, even though it wasn't the intent of specific to budget, it was the budget overall, not different categories, but.
So, to be clear, the resolution that's adopting that budget that is in our board packet, that is the budget that we're going to be voting on in slightly less than two weeks.
Correct.
So if anybody has any questions, in order to be able to vote on that, they need to get them to you, our superintendent, who will get them to you? Director Bassett?
I'm just assuming that once I get whatever you craft, then I might have some then, but, because it may help flesh this out, so.
Well, and that's why, that's what, that's, I'm glad you, I'm glad you asked that question, because that was my clarifying question, because I want to make sure we deliver on what your expectation is. So, please help us. Before the next meeting, so is it a review of what our base staffing model, and then our service model was? And, and I can't remember what date we presented that to the board. January 6th?
And actually, if I could, you know, as you know, we have kind of been walking down, marching down the path of we need to make some changes, and you need to make decisions. So as your team is working with you, the cabinet and others, to kind of craft, here's, here's maybe what makes sense in this, in this situation, or here's what maybe makes sense in that situation, and as a result of that, here's what we're recommending, here's where we're going. You know, and so, because there have been some decisions that have been made that will impact programming.
So.
You know, so I'm not sure how that gives.
And I just want to, I want to be sure that we've delivered, because I, I believe, I believe, if I'm right, in January, we presented what that base model and the service model would be, and then the board also received, maybe last week, the additional FTE that we allocated. So I just want to be clear that we're delivering.
Well, we may be talking about same thing, but I'm, I'm just, I know what I'm talking about. And the fact is, is that just as you just said, a presentation in January, with a lot of conversation and dialogue and back and forth with the board members, as well as with your cabinet, things have shifted and changed.
They haven't though. The, the base model, I just want to be really clear that the, the base model that we use for staffing and the service model have remained consistent to what we shared, with the exception of the email that I sent last week that talked about those additional FTE. So, if, if it's good to summarize this again, we can, we can certainly do that. I just, I don't want at the last minute to get a whole slew of questions, I want to be sure we're clear right now, what you have.
So I'm, that's why I'm asking, I'm asking my question right now. My question and my comments have to do with, there are some programs in this district that will change. Now, just a summary of what those are, is all I ask for. I'm not talking, I mean, I'm not talking how many FTE or any of those kinds of things, because that, that's not landing with, that won't land with public. You know, that's what we need to build the budget, so we know we've got the right amount of money and all of those things. But the programs that we are going to re- But the programs that we are going to retain, change, shift, and I'll give an example. If we're going to have fewer special education centers, that, it may be a poor example. But if we're shifting and changing some programs in a major way, and I, I don't, I'm not sure I have a handle and understanding of what all of those are. You know, and the assumptions that are underneath those things. And I, I'm not, I don't, I'm not asking for war and peace. Because I know that that's a lot of work. You've already done, I assume you've done the work, if you've come to some land in some places. But there's not one concise place that I know of where I really feel like I know that you've, this is the final decision, or that's the final decision with regard to some various programs. So maybe everybody else knows, and I'm just speaking for me. That's, that's what we're supposed to do. I'm just speaking for myself.
We do have, I, I think, unless it's been removed, conversation at the budget, are we doing, is budget just a part of the work session tonight? So maybe it's just identifying and creating a one-page document of the summary of that?
I love an executive summary.
Perfect.
Director Long, did you still have something?
Yeah. So, and maybe we could talk about this more at the work session, but I'm just wondering about, you know, we've gotten several emails and some input from community around our budget and some of the budget decisions, like when do we as the board sit and discuss some of that information that we've gotten from community and parent members about some of the worries and concerns they have with some of the budget changes that are happening?
I don't see those emails necessarily. I would say, I would say that's, I don't know how to answer that other than the, the work session.
That's a place.
Question?
Okay. And I think, I think that's an important question, Director Long, because if the board, as an, as a full board, is giving us direction to reinstate decisions that we've already communicated, then what that will mean is we will have to figure out where to make additional cuts and certainly won't have the time to vet some of those things as we have through the process. So, so I think that will be very important to know. If, if the board is, again, and this has to be a full board making decisions, if there's one or two individuals who, who don't agree with decisions, and, and I would guess, in a $21 million budget deficit, there's going to be disagreement with how we've done things or people who don't like how we've done things or the decisions we've made. So again, if there's direction about whoa, 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 we will not as a full board approve this budget unless you bring back X. So, so we just need to be really clear tonight because we have a, two weeks, less than two weeks, to come forward again.
Director Bassett?
Well, thank you, Superintendent, for, you're just feeling the, the spirit of this is. And, and as you know, every time I've talked about it, I've been saying, we need to talk about this in a work session because I don't want to get to the last minute. I mean, the board as a whole needs to talk about these things so we land someplace, so we don't have unnecessary churn. You know, it's a full board discussion, you know, and you take at least four, up to seven, to pass it.
Yep.
And so there's no point in waiting till the end to find out stuff, and we're going to get there and have big, and I'm not suggesting that that will happen.
Okay. Or, or the, or the finding out stuff, I just, I just, I just also know, I just want to be really transparent and clear that there should be nothing to this point.
I agree.
That is a surprise to the board or that the board doesn't know. So, so if, if, if there is, we have to know. But you mentioned, we've had cabinet conversations, but there's been nothing about our budget and decisions that haven't come before the board and the public.
And so, as you know, I asked for us to have a work session about it, just so we can get a summary to say, okay, where are we? And so I wouldn't be asking that question if I felt like I knew, and I wouldn't be asking for a summary of what, what happened, where the programs, where did we land? If I knew that. And so, and I, I haven't been asleep at these, I go to sleep a lot, but I haven't been asleep at these meetings. So I'm not suggesting that anything's going to change. I'm just saying, just to make sure we know where we're landing.
Okay. Well, we'll land at the work session.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Action item C, a resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League. This is routine, Director Williams, Executive Director Williams.
And Chair Evans Becker, Superintendent Salom, members of the board. As I'm here to request approval for the 25, 25-26 resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League for Armstrong and Cooper High Schools. As Chair Evans Becker stated, this is routine process, so just here to request approval.
And I believe we have to do two separate resolutions, right? One for Armstrong and, pardon me?
There's one, there's one for Armstrong and one for Cooper.
Yes. Okay. So you have the resolutions. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the resolution for Armstrong and waive the reading.
Thank you. Director Bassett has moved the resolution for Armstrong and the Minnesota State High School League. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Bowman, waiving the reading of the resolution. If I don't see any hands, we can vote. And it's a roll call vote.
Thank you. Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Hillenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes, excuse me. Director Long?
Yes.
And Director Wuto?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Do I have a motion for the Cooper agreement with the Minnesota State High School League?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hillenbrand, seconded by Director Wuto, and we're waiving the reading on that one also? Okay, I don't see any hands. Let's take a roll call vote for the Cooper resolution.
Great. Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Hillenbrand?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
Thank you.
Six in favor, none opposed. Motion carries. We're good to go. Thank you. All right. Now, we are on number, letter D, the second read for the policies, members of the policy committee. These policies are 101, 101.1, 102, and 103. Is someone speaking for the policy committee?
Sorry, we, this is something we should put on our agenda for tomorrow night is to discuss who will be doing these things. But, yeah, these are basically all changes that have to do with just updating to be in line with the school board association. There's nothing, no major changes in the content of these.
Thank you. Okay. Just tell me, do we approve each one individually or do we do them as a group?
It's not action tonight, is it? Can we do it in one?
We do in one? Okay. Yes?
I'll move approval of the policies that are on tonight's agenda.
Okay. Director Bowman has moved approval of 101, 101.1, 102, and 103. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Director Wuto. And policies get a voice vote. I see no discuss, no more discussion, so they don't get a voice vote?
Yeah, they do.
Oh, take it away, clerk.
Oh, voice vote or roll call?
Oh, oh, wait.
Yeah, it's a voice.
Oh, thank you. Yes. We use our voices for both of them. It's just, all right. All in favor of the rest of approving these four policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. We have the four policies approved. Policy committee report.
We worked on these particular policies and we have more coming up when we meet tomorrow. So there's no, no news really.
Meet tomorrow. Okay. Ad hoc safety security committee report?
Yes, we have sent an email to the attorney. We had given a due date of May 30th to get a draft back from him. We have not received that draft back yet for going forward with that. We also have not received any dates for our next committee meeting. So that's where we are right now. We're waiting for dates when our committee can meet. And we're also waiting for that draft back from the attorney so that we can move on with our work.
Okay. Thank you. Administrative reports, Dr. Salo?
I don't believe we have any administrative reports as I am looking at the team and I'm getting shaking of heads. There are no administrative reports.
All right then. Moving right along. The item number seven is an action item. It is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are routine in nature and are acted on with a singular motion unless there's a board member that would like to remove one of the items from the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved?
Seconded.
And seconded by Director Hillenbrand. The items on the action agenda, or the consent agenda are the QCOM annual report, our draft of minutes, personnel reports for licensed and nonlicensed staff, and financial reports. Okay. I see no hands. I see a hand, Director Bassett.
So legislatively, I thought I heard something in the session about changes to QCOM. If that's true, then it's, in a future time, could we hear about it? I mean, I didn't pull it off the agenda because we like it. I don't know what chair.
You're done, right?
There have been no changes suggested, nor the House funding bill. Was going to be funded next year. It will.
Even better. Okay. So with that said?
My good news.
It is good news. With that said, it's time to vote, and I know the consent agenda is a roll call vote with.
I am ready. Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Hillenbrand?
Yes.
Director Long?
No.
And Director Wuto?
Yes.
We have five yes, one no. The consent agenda has passed. And this brings us to, we're done. Future events should scroll on the, on the screen. And is there a move to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Said moved by Director Bassett, seconded, seconded by Director Bowman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. We are adjourned, and it is 20 minutes to eight. Go team. We are adjourned, and it is 20 minutes to eight. Go team. Welcome to the Hark session for Robbinsdale Area Schools. It is Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025, and it is 7:54 PM. I'm Rita Evans Becker, Board Chair. Introduce yourselves. Go in your room this way.
Renee Bowman, Robbinsdale School Board.
Terrence Phillips, Superintendent.
I'm Ethan Helenbrand, School Board.
Caroline, School Board Vice Chair.
Bob McCall, Assistant Superintendent.
Kristen Holm, Chief Financial Officer.
Maureen Mullin, Director of Facility Operations.
Amy O'Grady, Executive Director of Community Resources.
Anthony Wells, Executive Director of Community Education Athletics.
Nathalie.
And in the back.
Nicole Armstrong, Community Member.
And Sarah Taylor, Community Member.
Thank you all. First things first, we get to this, or just barely touched on it, a past meeting. The land acknowledgement statement, let's do that part first. I would like the board to consider reading the land acknowledgement statement before each meeting. It comes up in so many presentations, and I think just sets tone. We talked about it two years ago, and I wasn't at the meeting. It was a work session where it was brought up. I was not here. But I think that as a board, we have grown since then. And I want to reveal things about having a board member read a land acknowledgement before each of our meetings.
I think where we landed was that it was the administration. That's what was left. It was administration.
Okay, well, I would like it to be a board thing also.
I understand, but you're in the right, but I agree with what you said. You started out with what you thought.
Okay.
So this is not an argument. I'm just sharing my view.
And I'm just.
Bringing up some information.
Good.
Lord, why is everything so hard?
Director Long? Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking this way. So what are raising your finger first and go?
Well, I just, I think it's a great idea. I think it sends a statement to our community about our support and understanding of the harm that institutional racism has done to our native community. And I think it's one thing we can do to show that we understand and know that we have to work on repairing that harm.
Director Long, you're next.
Yeah, and then my contribution to this is just that I feel like we need to talk to the makers of the land acknowledgement and have their permission to read that because the school board did not create that land acknowledgement. It was created by parents, community members, staff.
I know that I talked to that Tupper, and she thought it would be wonderful if we could do that. When I were sitting at the powwow, and I said, what would you think? Would it be all right if the board discussed it and did it again? And she was thinking there was a good idea.
Do you think?
So that's, I was gonna follow up on Director Long. So APAC would be the next step?
Yeah.
Director Bassett?
Well, I just, if I just understood you to say you could go back and talk, there would be some discussion with APAC about that.
I would be, I would be happy to.
No, I just want, not wanting to, but I'm just wondering about that. That was it.
That's appropriate.
I do too, because it wasn't the board that created, you know, they did. You know, and actually, it was all our staff. The American Indian Education staff was involved in that. So it was a more big production. And at the time, it was decided that it would be implemented by, at the district level because part of the conversation was if it was gonna be expected out of the buildings, it would really take an administrative leader to really kind of lead the charge because school board members are not in the buildings. Because it was the hope of further conversation. And I've been, one of my comments, I'm just kind of remembering from the conversation of a range of directors. One of the things talked about was how did the staff feel? Well, people, did all of a sudden they have this, and do they even believe in it? So I'm just sharing the background. Did you say you weren't here?
I was not here.
Okay, I'm just saying, I just was sharing background.
I'm listening.
She said that. Okay. But so it was a full conversation. It wasn't the one person, one staff person saying do this. It was, that was the full discussion of it. And I think APAC is in a bad position. They shouldn't, you know. And moreover, I guess my own personal input, because that was just sharing back with you, my own personal input is that I think the chair, you know, having it be read by the chair, if you want to do that, I think that's fine. I mean, that's my personal perspective. Is it the chair is ready to be, the chair wants to start doing that? I mean, so that's my personal perspective. And so I was just sharing the background for others because I think that was a great suggestion. Thank you for being my, talking about the chair.
Director Bowman?
Yeah, it was kind of a contentious meeting. And from the very beginning, I supported reading the board. Ditto to everything that Director Bowman said about attempts to reparation type of things. And I think the other thing interesting to note out that I pointed to that was we sort of think that that institutional racism is gone until you do what I did this past year, and I sent off to North Dakota for their travel guide. And then you see the institutional racism still within the 2025 travel guide from the state of North Dakota that completely discounts natives completely in that travel guide. So it's heartbreaking, and I can't wait till we start doing this. I would like to see it rotate around the table for all of us to speak those words out of our own mouth. So.
Director Long?
So I'm just kind of wondering, so will then we have a discussion with APAC at a business meeting, at a work session about this? Or will it happen, I don't know, through an email or something? I'm just wondering how we're gonna go about getting the approval. I guess I prefer it to be in the public, but I don't know.
I would like to make sure that board members are, or at least the majority of board members are on board with having it read before we approach APAC. I'd be happy to invite them to, I would like, I'd be happy to talk with them. I would be happy to have them at meetings, maybe invite them, talk to them about it, and invite them to the first meeting that we'll be doing that. But I want to make sure before we take any step toward APAC that I have a majority of the board supporting reading it at meetings. Director Bassett?
I just, we don't, I mean, it kind of presupposes. I'd like to hear what they had to say first before I make a decision. I mean, why are we inviting them? We already have, you know. I would like to have them come before I make a decision. Not more complicated than that.
I would decide now, I would like to have us read it and go to them to let them know the board's mind, the board's will has changed. And we, if they're still willing to have us read it at board meetings, we'll be willing to read it. That's what I.
That's not what I heard Director Long ask for. Director Long said, can we invite them here to a meeting for a dialogue? I would really, really appreciate that because I would really like to hear from them. And so the majority of, you know, you said what you had to say. And I didn't really pay attention if other people said, yeah, I want to do it. But I know that I have a different opinion, and I'm not, I'm not a detractor. You know, I'm just saying, I'd like to give them respect of hearing from them first.
Is that interesting?
I mean, I would like us to ask their permission since it is theirs and not ours, you know. But, you know, I mean, who, I don't know, you're saying that is saying yes. But I don't know, you know.
We should represent.
Right. Or I don't know what this committee's response might be. So it might be a deeper conversation that we end up having with them. I don't know.
That's it.
But I mean, that's just throwing all possible possibilities out there. There's infinite number of possibilities of how that could go.
I don't want to invite them to a board meeting and have us not always on the same page about reading it because I do not want to do any more harm than, than they said happened.
Yeah, and for me, I feel like I'm for it. I just want to know how they feel about us doing that.
That is how I understood, what I understood you just said. Director Wuto?
Yeah, I think for the most part, I think I'll agree that the best thing would be to, for us to agree that it's worthy of us reading at a board table, and then reach out to them with a proposal. And if they said no, no harm is lost. If they want further conversation with us, then they can still join in that conversation.
And if they just say, if they just say yes, and to Director Long's question, are they okay with board members saying it? And they say yes, you could offer, is there any more conversation you'd like to have with the board? Or if they say yes, that might be enough. Because I also don't want them to feel they have to come. I mean, certainly for a conversation.
This came from you. This was your idea. That's what you just said. That is, you know, that's the epitome of people other than native people coming and asking for something. It's you saying, this is what I want to do. I want you all to agree to it before we do it. That's how it's hitting me. And I feel like that's overstepping. You may feel that way, but I think hearing from them first is respectful. You know, so I mean, it's not, there's nothing sinister about that. It's just, I mean, I think it's respectful to say, we'd like you to come because we want to talk a little bit more about this. We landed someplace in the past. We want to talk about it again. That's highly respectful.
Director Wuto?
Yeah, but I think if we are not agreeing to why they are coming, then it can become a discussion that will do more damage than good.
That's really where I'm coming from. Does that make this? Excuse me.
I want to move a motion that the board takes a vote to either agree that we will be able to recite the land acknowledgement. And if the board decides to do that, then we can understand how we get their approval.
I would second that. Okay. Not seeing any hands for more discussion?
No, that's actually saying that, well, I guess one thing to say is that clearly this is a statement that they're invested in and that they want to have spoken, heard, and seen because they're putting it out. Their staff are putting it out there. So it's just a question of we have permission to use their language, or if we don't, do we draft them? If we all agree. I don't.
They put a lot of titles.
No, no, I'm just saying that, okay. There's a motion on the floor, and every presentation that we are getting has the statement. And so, okay. So if you're in favor of us agreeing to approach APAC to say we would like to read it before meetings, and see what their comment is, please say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Hearing no nays?
Sorry, I was.
Were you thinking aye while you were cutting?
Yeah, well, because I'm not a pirate.
Thank you.
I was thinking aye.
So if it's all right with the board, do you want both Director Long and me to talk to them? Or just one of us to talk to them?
The chair.
I will take it. I will take your attending.
I think we'll get to that.
Okay. We'll, we'll take the next steps at the next time. First, we'll talk to APEC. All right, let's move on. Number three, Vision Team 2030.
No, no, we saw the flags. Yeah.
Oh, the flags, thank you. Okay. So there are tribal flags. There are 11 tribal nations in Minnesota, and each one has a flag. And they are being displayed in school, at school events. I know that Minneapolis School Board has them displayed behind them, right Director Long? And I was approached to see if maybe we could display them in the boardroom. How do people feel though? The 11 tribal flags being clearly displayed behind us, respectfully displayed behind us as a, as another step that you would be, what do you feel?
I'm 100% in support of it. I, again, we speak it, we need to show it, we need to live it. 100% support.
Director Long, then?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think too, imagine the message it sends if you're a student who is a member of one of those tribes, that, that our culture, our country, our state has done so much to tear down, to show, to have it up there, would be so meaningful.
And Director Long?
Yeah, my thing is too, I just want to make sure that we're not imposing something on somebody. You know, I, I think Director Bassett had a good point about like, you know, we're asking this, not them. And so making sure that they're comfortable with the ask that we're asking, because that can be really uncomfortable for people of color to feel like what we're trying to gain in our equity is being taken over by other people. And they're more or less kind of, then it kind of starts to feel like it's, things are being imposed on us, or this equity is being imposed on us, or look, you've given us, we're giving you this, now, you know, you should be happy. So I just want to make sure that they're not gonna feel like that now, because that was a good point that Director Bassett brought up.
Thank you. So, Director Bassett?
I just feel like that the American flag is something that people really take exception to. Many people do, Ameri, just Ameri, mine all Americans.
I just want to know, what do you mean by taking exception?
Can I just make a comment, like, you know, just, just say what I'm thinking and have it just be, oh, listen to, without a major, okay, I was just finishing, I was just beginning to talk. I would really appreciate that. And so what I'm saying is that, a couple of things. When I, when I saw that, the first thing that I did is I looked in my little, you know, booklet that we got from, you know, when we had people come from the tribal, from TNEC. And so I looked at that and to see if there was anything to hear about that. I then, you know, also consulted some other things. And what I know is that in government buildings, in government agencies, that's often, they're often displayed. I don't know that there has been, and what is there, and I wondered if there was a formal request from TNEC about this, because that's what I heard when it was mentioned to me. TNEC was set in the same breath. So if TNEC made a formal request that we do that, I'm interested in knowing that and seeing what that says, because they're, and then they work within the Department of Education. So if, if we're breaking new ground, and it's not so much breaking in Minneapolis, it's going to be, remember, they're, they're big. And so it's like, well, so whatever they're doing, I don't even know. But I do know this. If TNEC is asked for it, then I would want to know that. And if that's the way it was represented to me, is that TNEC requested this. So I don't know if they did or not, I wonder. So that's the question. So did TNEC represent it? And if they did, can we have a formal request? I think that kind of goes to the point we were just talking about. It's just respectful, you know, is, that's all. It's just a matter of respect. Instead of us arbitrarily deciding that we know best and we're gonna start doing that. And I will also say, another thing that came to my mind is the sensitivity that many Americans have about the American flag. And we have, we have our American flag here, we have the new Minnesota flag. So I just think that deserves thought, because I thought about it.
I wanted to clarify that what it meant by taking exception to the US flag.
Just like they take, just like they take exception all the time. I see for people, if somebody does something to the flag and people take exception. I mean, who knows what it's gonna be? I, I'm not in that camp, but I'm aware of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's good.
Our long, and then you, you pretty much.
I just wanted to add, and then I'm gonna, oh, here's one, sorry. Yeah, I mean, I, I think just like the land acknowledgement, we, a lot of what I hear, if they will grant the approval, then I think we should go through the right channels to make sure we are getting the approval proceeding.
Thank you.
And I, I just want to add, and I think that Dr. Stowe can support this, and the other staff members who were at the TNEC meetings, two of them, I think, who've been here this year. One of the things that shines through in our TNEC meetings is the tremendous amount of pride that the TNEC committee has for the work done here in Robbinsdale. According, and I gave out that booklet, basically. Most of the work done by our TNEC people here, that committee is asking other school districts around the state to take the work that's being done here in Robbinsdale and adopt it for themselves, like the dashboard that's within that book. And many of the other things. Our creative program is growing in this district. We have this incredible staff in this district working for the, working with the TNEC group. And when you sit and listen to the TNEC elders, that, you know, whoever runs TNEC, the amount of accolades that they have laid on Robbinsdale School District for the work is really humbling. And I would hope that that could sort of be taken into consideration also, because they stand, our team, our group here in this district stand as a shining example of building that program within a public education district. So, and that might be the value if we bring them in here. Maybe some of the value is to even bring in some of the statewide people from TNEC that could address that, so, because it's very impressive, so.
I, I just checked, and the next APEC meeting is June 9th. So I wondered to the earlier conversation, if that would be the most appropriate place for the chair to go to share the contents of this conversation in the tone and, and with, you know, the message that you all share about that, to see what their, their comfort and support is, and if this is something that would be, would, would land well with them. And then, again, that invitation could be if they wanted to have a conversation with the board, but if there is support, that may not be necessary.
And that's, did you say TNEC or APEC?
APEC. I meant A, I meant APEC. Our American Indian, oh, sorry.
Okay. Director Bassett?
Well, of course, I've served on TNEC too. And so, and this district has come a long way. In the last couple of years, I've, I've really appreciated Director Long's comments about how T, how our own staff have been good examples and are doing good work. I certainly agree, you know? But I also know how touching that some of, some of the discussion can be with tribes. As you, as you know, if you've been involved with TNEC, each one of the tribes has their own counsel. So I don't know that they would be opposed to it. I like the idea of having a conversation. But that's all I've been saying since I started talking, is having a conversation with that person when we just decide to do something, and being aware that there are people who take exception to things that are happening, they think is approaching on the American flag. That's real in America. You know? I'm not gonna pretend like it's not.
So this is what I'm gonna do. I'm going to go to the next APEC meeting on June 9th, if they'll let me attend. And I will tell them that we are interested in reading the land acknowledgement. And I will ask also about the flag, get my, the flag information there. I was under the impression that TNEC provided the flags to the school district to be used in buildings. But we can, we, yeah, we'll learn more about it. I will find out more about it June 9th, and I will report back.
Would, would you like me to make the request from, to get on the agenda?
I think that would be wonderful. Okay. Thank you. All right. Vision number three, Vision Team 2030, catch up.
Excellent. This is gonna be a very brief catch up. I think we've caught you up since the April meeting. So the May meeting, what we did with the team is continuing. We actually started showing some of the stakeholder data, especially as it pertains to some questions around daily lived experience of our students, and really continuing to discuss that academic visioning piece around teaching and learning. So we did just a brief bit about that, that the maj, and then the majority of the meeting was really taking a look at some of the results of our comprehensive facility assessments, and to start seeing, and this was referenced when Mr. Hart spoke, just the, the large amount of building needs that we have across the district. So the group did some activities to, to just start looking at that data. And again, what we wanted to do is scaffold some of the information so that as they continued to learn, they were looking at both the maintenance needs of the building, starting to talk about some of the capacity of our buildings as just a couple of criteria areas, as we continue to talk about, you know, what their recommendations may be. We'll be overlaying that with a whole lot as we're looking at geography of the district and where some of our buildings are. But it's been really great to have that conversation grounded first in teaching and learning, and what we want that experience to be for kids, and now we're talking about buildings. So I know right now, as soon as I'm not talking, you're going to hear some more of that data and information as we talk about long-term facility maintenance. The other thing I just wanted to let y'all know is that we have an extended time period with the team at our June meeting, June 18th, where we're gonna be taking a few visits to some other school districts, some build, some districts that have renovated buildings, to see what that looks like, and then also a couple of new buildings. And again, that's just an opportunity to help bring to light and have our teams see some of the things that they've been reading about in terms of what does it mean to have flexible learning spaces? What does it mean, you know? So they'll see some of that in action. So that's what June looks like. We're gonna have to see if we need to add some more meetings, because there's a, we're not adding meetings, people. We're busy. But to add more meetings, so that we can make sure that we are moving along at a pace and a wave, which still brings us into that goal of recommendations to y'all in September. With that, I am happy to hand it over, unless there's any questions, I'm happy.
There is a question. Now Director Long has a question.
Yeah. So I'm wondering if there is any possible way of creating like a Google folder or something where you could put this information in there that you're sharing with them? Just because I know there's like a huge amount of stuff that you guys have been going through. But just so that, you know, we get the recommendations, we can see where the history of these recommendations came from?
I appreciate that question. Yes, and, yes, and what we also want to do, you know, just like we were able to do, to be on pace with it, we had Hazel Reinhardt, right after she presented to Vision Team, she came and presented to y'all. I think there's some of the teaching and learning stuff that I'll definitely catch y'all up in. And I think tonight, there'll be some information that you get caught up on. But I, I appreciate you saying that, and absolutely, I think we could give you the information. I'd even rather have an opportunity to talk through these things throughout the summer to make sure exactly what you said doesn't happen, that we get to the spot. And without some of the context, you're not sure where it came from. So I appreciate that, for sure.
Yeah, and I think it would still be helpful to also have like a Google folder that we can have a history of that information in there.
Can you throw that?
Yeah. Because I think there will probably be some pieces that maybe they talk about, but maybe they aren't as integral for the board to talk about, but we might want to just see it, you know?
Thank you.
Okay. That leads right into our tenure.
Yes.
LTFM?
Could you bring that up, Molly? Dr. Sal, Chair Rebecca, and all the members of the board. I'm looking forward to talking to you about facility conditions assessment and our LTFM update. And I think it's really timely, because our visioning team process is so tied into our facilities piece and with our LTFM process, and where we're at with that tenure plan right now. So our site conditions are always assessed every year, as we update our plan every year, our tenure plan, which we were required to do. And this year, with our revisioning process and brightsizing the district, we're gonna do some special challenges with that. So we wanted to do a really deep dive, make sure we have really accurate data and current information on our buildings and our sites. So that's what we engaged in over the last months. There were tours with our, at our different sites, and we're kind of going through the information that was gathered, how it's been assessed, and how it's compiled to give us some data. And this presentation is almost exactly what the visioning team saw last, at the last meeting. So with the caveat that when we did some of the comparisons of buildings, we used fake names, so that wouldn't influence their, their, their impressions. But we have the real length of the sites in this presentation. So the conditions assessment, again, a deep dive. What that looked like is that we had teams going to every building, being accompanied by our maintenance director or another facility, maintenance person, looking, going up on the roofs, going into every boiler room, going through classrooms, through the hallways, into the tunnels, out on the sites, into the bleachers, into our theaters, looking at those sites, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, it finishes, whether it's a floor finish or a wall finish, a lighting, that sort of thing, looking at those conditions, both in how they're being used, their age, are they efficient, whether it's from an energy or, or an operational perspective. So experts from many different areas doing those walkthroughs. The site admin were amazingly patient, as I would send out these emails saying, Wednesday at 2 o'clock, you're having a group of four people come through, it'll be about two hours, etc. They were really great. But it was team after team of experts going through the building, whether it was a pool, or a theater, or a set of bleachers. And a really important deep dive. They took photos, they gave ID numbers to every piece of equipment. Just really, just a vast amount of data that is gonna serve us well for years. So important to get, especially at this point. So they then prioritized it, since in the last bullet point, into the urgency of the needs. The first bucket, one to two years, second bucket, three to five, and last bucket, six to 10. As we know, we have a tenure plan, and then our job was to kind of spread that out over 10 years. So systems evaluated, physical hazards, you know, bleachers, surfaces, indoor air quality. So the cubic feet, per minute of air moving through a space, the quality of that air, condition of our pools, conditions of our building hardware, whether it's a door handle or a hinge, or a movable wall, that sort of things, fenestrations, which are our exterior doors, our windows, flashings, our brickwork, the tuck pointing, the roofing systems themselves, the cladding on our penthouses. Everything was looked at really, really closely, many, many different systems. And here's some examples of those, what we're calling deficiencies. So the first picture you see up there is a rooftop unit, kind of showing its age. You can see it's been up there for a few years. We have rooftop unit, HVAC unit replacements on our LTFM plan currently. And so this is one of those scheduled. The second one is a stadium. You can see the gates are definitely, we did some repairs. The one on the far right is an exhaust fan, well beyond serviceable lifespan. It's pretty rusted out there. Lower left corner, that's a, some ductwork, peel and paint work in the foyer of one of our buildings. The middle bottom photo is a pool. You can see the tile deterioration inside that pool. And that lower right is a cabinet heater and an entryway in one of our buildings. Again, definitely showing its age there. These photos, that upper left is an exterior door that is dented and damaged, and is, doesn't latch effectively every time. That middle photo, you can see where that water is pooling. That's a roof that's not draining properly. So again, there's a few different concerns with that. But the photo on the right is an interior door. There's also damage, needs painting. Lower left is a restroom. You can see the floor is in very poor condition. Middle photo shows a pavement in a parking lot at one of our middle schools that is in really poor condition. And the far right is, it's an odd photo, but it's a piece of ductwork running, and you can see the ceiling above it, and you can see ceiling tile is missing and some damage. So not a great look on us there. Some other items on the far left there is an exterior cabinet at the bottom. You can see the veneer is peeled off and damaged. The second photo from the left is wall tile that you can see has been damaged. Like it's, there's something there that's broken. The next photo is carpet in a... The next photo is carpet in an elevator, and the far right photo is a rusted out door jam on an exterior door. So the next photos, excuse me, are going to show some of the evaluation tools that were, that the data was put into. So one of them was floor plans, so each site has a set of floor plans. This is an example of a flooring floor plan that shows in gradient, red, yellow, green, so red is, it needs attention now, yellow is, we better do it soon, and green is that third bucket, that six to 10 years. So there is a floor plan like this for the floor finishes for every building, there's a floor plan like this showing the wall finish condition of every building, there's a floor plan like this showing the rough condition, and everyone is graded in that red, yellow, green descriptions. Here's a roof plan showing that, so our roofs are actually in pretty good shape overall, especially in comparison to some of the conditions of the interiors of our buildings. But this particular roof has one that's in red, and this is one that is being done soon. So this is what a, the roof documentation would look like, again, details about the square footage, the type, the age, and then also some photos, so there's a lot of photo documentation of the evaluations that were done. This is a documentation for our site conditions, so this is a different color scale, we have 10 years, you can see on the left-hand side, hard to see at this scale, I understand, but showing what years those surfaces should either be resurfaced or done a million overlay or done a crack seal or a chip seal. So depending on the condition, this is a document that shows how we should address each of those hard surfaces, and each site has a map like this showing those hard surfaces. This is another tool, this is a spreadsheet, and each one of the sites has a spreadsheet like this, so it's broken out by site needs, by finance code, and you can see that third column is an ID number, so every piece of equipment was given an ID number, it identifies the site and the type of piece of equipment. You can see that on the second to last column, a priority level, one to two years, six to 10 years, and then a 2026 project estimate for what that repair or replacement would cost. So every mechanical system is listed in a spreadsheet, again, by FIN code, by site, by estimated amount in today's dollars, and by priority level. So these, this spreadsheet, again, these next three slides show the assessment results in different waves. This one shows both the urgency of the needs and also by deferred maintenance categories of our systems. So on the far left, there's a FIN code that goes along with the life safety, accessibility of building envelope, and then urgent needs, the dollar amount, and then on the far right is the dollar amount for those life safety, for those over 10 years, and then the column, the vertical column is in those one to two, three to five, and six to 10 years. So this is again by, by system, by mechanical system or building system. The next way the data was sliced and diced was by, based on the urgency of needs, and this is where your presentation differs from the visioning team because you can see the name of the school here. So this is the dollar amount by site in those buckets of one to two, three to five, six to 10, and then totals by bucket and the overall total. So all of our sites, that way. And then the last one is, again, using that red, green scale, darkest green identifies the lowest cost, this is by per square foot, and then the darkest red identifies the highest cost per square foot by building, and then also by, divided by the urgency of needs. The next slide was kind of rolling into current LTFM. So we had some big LTFM projects that we put on hold earlier this year as we realized that financial condition is much different than we thought it was at the beginning of the year, and that we were going to have to reevaluate how we looked at our buildings. So some current projects that we identified that we definitely have to keep moving on are our projects, we need to make sure our buildings are dry, our lights stay on, our heat works, our cooling works. So some of those are the projects, those operationally essential projects we continue. So these were already on our LTFM project, and so we continue moving forward with these three. These were also on our LTFM project, the first two were others, so the Forest Elementary, pavement million overlay, it's a parking lot in the drive lane at Forest, the elevator replacement was part of a larger project at Lakeview, we pulled most of the project, but the elevator had to be replaced, so we kept that project on for this year. HVAC repairs, we've been doing ongoing repairs at Robbinsdale Middle School on the HVAC system throughout the spring and summer, and we have some other projects that were not on our LTFM plan but are urgent needs that we are addressing this summer. Oh, I did something wrong there. Oh, I had more slides here. Could you help me out, Molly? I'm not sure. I don't know what's going on. Okay. Oh, there we go. Awesome, thank you. So without our large projects going on, we have other various projects going on at small. These were not specifically identified on our LTFM plan, but they are all eligible for LTFM dollars. So we've got pavement work at Needle Zachary, Armstrong High School, ESC and bus garage, we've got smaller repairs of patches. We're doing repairs at the loading dock at Armstrong High School, repairing a set of stairs at the receiving door there, we're doing some repairs at Fair Crystal and at Cooper, we're doing dumpster enclosure repairs at RSI, Meadow Lake and Sonnason, we're doing some storm replacements, some at Fair Crystal, PMS, RMS, we're doing some painting at RMS, and various other electrical, mechanical, plumbing projects around the district this summer. And as things come up through, as we get into the summer, I'm sure we'll find more as we begin to, what's going on. And that is, brings us up to date, and I think where we go from here is yet to be seen, that will be up to you to decide, so questions for me, any of this?
I have a question. I'm just curious on the small LTFM projects at the various sites, are those done by contractors or are those done by a custodial or a janitor, you know?
Yeah, it's actually a variety, so for example, our dumpster enclosures, those are going to be done by our carpenters, because they can do the welding for the poles, they can do the woodwork. The mechanical projects at RMS, those have been done by contractors through the winter and spring and our large projects. We have, there are some projects that we could do in-house, but right now our capacity is not that great and the need is quite great, so what we can do in-house, we certainly grab.
This is a very impressive study and list. Director Bass, do you have something?
Actually, it's related to something that Director Long just asked you, and so I wondered if we still had some people on staff who could do, who would earn some of that maintenance, and I heard you say cafeteria, and I hear you said.
We have two carpenters, yeah.
Yeah, so we have a finite group of people and amount of talent.
Yes.
You know, different skills that they might have.
That's correct. When I first started with the district, we talked about kind of how we're staffed, and one of the things we talked about in terms of how our district is staffed for our needs, we have a very low maintenance staff per square foot ratio, very, per district standards is very, very low. We have some good skills here, and we have much greater needs that we have standing for, so we do source out a lot of the work that we do.
I am wondering about, it was the first slide you had talked about, 45 consultants, 14 companies, yada, yada, I'm wondering about what was the cost in 45 consultants, 14 companies?
Kristin addressed that, that would be. So this was as part of the Nexus contract, I'm trying to remember what the terms of those agreement, that agreement was.
Yeah, we discussed it here, and I don't recall that at this point either, part of that was the professional services contract, you know, you brought that here, we were talking about having Alyssa step out to support some of the reimagine Ardell, and we had had different facility assessments over the years, but not a comprehensive one. Happy to get that information to you, but not prepared to answer it right now.
Yes, that would be something.
Sure, absolutely.
So the urgent one to two years total is 72 million, but then the urgent one to two years total is 76 million, is that just?
I'm sorry, which slide are you on?
Between slides 11 and 12, the urgent and the urgent, is that just because we're just, that's ballpark-ish? That one is 72, and the next page, the urgent one is itemized out at 76?
That is a good question, and I will need to look into what's at this.
Just fine.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I need somebody to. Thank you. Director Long?
I just want to thank whoever put this together, because this is the most comprehensive building information I have seen out of this district in a number of years, and it's very detailed, and I'm just very impressed with the fine-tooth comb at which things were looked at and assessed, because for me as a board member, I can only make decisions based on what I know, and if only part of it has been gone through or only part of it utilized, it doesn't surface, and I can go back to my first term on this board and when I know about information like this that provides us with a roadmap for a good 10 years, which makes for decision-making from the board table easier, because it's in better, smaller bites that can continue to improve, so I just can't say enough about the report, I'm just really, really impressed with it, so thank you.
It's a ton of data, though.
Yes, the data we need to use to make decisions.
Best guess, when looking at the assessment results, you're switching between long-term facility maintenance codes and sites identified, so I'm not wondering if there aren't costs built into the sites identified that don't qualify under the categories under the long-term facility maintenance. It's a guess, but looking at the two differences, that's what I'm.
Sounds good to me.
Health and safety. So mine is quite though, because on this paper, then, for the LTFM, the spending trigger significantly less for the last two years, then 72 million.
So this is not our plan, this is the assessment and the recommendations, yes, and so from this, we, they did three buckets, we needed 10 buckets, right? So we had to take this information and say, okay, what are we going to do, and this is where we landed.
Well, and I'm going to piggyback on that because it comes down to what Michael Hart had said as far as a bridge point, right? We do not know, and I know people even believe by looking at this list that the district has a preconceived notion of what buildings are going to be operational in three years and what aren't. We genuinely don't have a preconceived notion. This is, you know, again, it's in front of you, it's in front of the visioning committee, the best information that we have as presented. The intent of this document marries itself to the earlier conversation and back to if the board says, that's not the direction we want to go, that's why this is the preliminary, preliminary, then we pivot and change. The intent of this document or the plan that we put forward, because we needed to come up with a plan, was to say, if the board agrees with the Finance Advisory Council and says, at least in the capital operating debt components of the levy, we want to remain consistent, we're looking at four to five million dollars, we already do 1.8 pay-as-you-go, we always have, there's been adjustments to that. So this was built on the concept of maintaining that levy, let's say right around the pay-as-you-go or adding, creating the pay-as-you-go of what was presented, and continuing to use the debt that was issued last fall, because back to the big balance that was sitting in that building construction, that I said there's a big balance there because we're pretending we're spending it all down, we're going to say we are, but that's going to be adjusted, it will be adjusted based on conversations here. If we're looking and saying, because right now, when we look back to, if you remember, we're looking at FY '27, that's what we're going to be levying for, so that's the columns you want to be looking at. So we're trying to meet our projects to make sure we're minimizing investments that we would lose or undo should a building close, but we need to continue the work in some capacity somehow. We need to be planful of, again, if it's maintaining the levy and doing that through a pay-as-you-go, and oh, by the way, we still need and have issued debt that we have three years to spend down. So the focus was on, here's where we are the next few years, to bridge us to a place where the vision, the board, the community, the, everything comes together to say, this is what facility speaking wise, Robbinsdale is going to look like, then you start grabbing, like, then you start getting into really the depths of whatever buildings are still in service and start addressing them in future years. That's what this document represents. So if you say, on a 10-year plan, all of the things you just said, we have a different plan for, we want to do things different, by all means, we should do that, please tell us. This was a starting place for us based on the FAC and what came out of there, and trying to minimize spending money that we shouldn't be spending yet still having to do, we still have to maintain 22 sites at this point to some degree. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Long?
So in going through this, were there any buildings or parts of buildings that, when they went through them, they were like, no, not even repairs will help this, this is a total breach?
So we were very careful to ask for data and to not ask for their opinions, and that is, and that is what my stance has been with them, wanting to ask me what I think about the buildings, and I can, I will tell you the condition, but not my opinion, it's not my decision to make, it's for us to put the data out there.
Yes, I want to follow up with that. So one of the exercises, to bring this back to the vision team, one of the exercises we did give them was, without the name of the school, to look at all of the data, and only knowing this data, not knowing geography, not knowing a lot, having them start asking those questions, Director Long, about, from a financial standpoint, and they also, I guess, looked at capacity as well, right? So from those two standpoints, based on this assessment, so that's right, some of what we're all going to have to grapple with as we move closer to recommendations is, where are investments that make sense, align to geography of buildings, align to what may it cost, because this isn't, this is just fixing and maintaining, this is not renovating, this is not adding on, this is not doing some of the other things that likely may come out of the work that we're doing to say, hey, what do we need to do to invest in our buildings to make sure that they are representing the learning needs markets? Can I add a follow-up to that?
So like, for instance, our bus garage, in past years, we've had lots of discussions about our bus garage and all the issues there, and pretty much that's not available, that would be something that if we were going to continue to use it as a bus garage, it would be better that we invest money in building a new one versus trying to fix all the repairs that need to happen there. So there was, there were not, there was nothing that really stood out in any of our other buildings, because I know we've talked about the bus garage being pretty bad, but so I'm just wondering if there are any of our other buildings that are like, pretty bad?
I would say maybe look at your heat map a little bit.
Just over here. For comparison, it's about, to build a new building, about $450 a square foot. And we're looking at that. So, our rating for repairs goes from $5.57 per square foot to 266 per square foot.
But the caveat to that is, a new building presumably doesn't need repairs for a decade. So, it would cost you more per square foot to build, but in theory, then you're not spending it moving forward to have to fix anytime soon. The other component, and again, for some people, it's easy to, to understand in your mind, back to what Dr. Stallow had said, long-term facility maintenance can only address like-for-like. It cannot add a wing. It cannot remodel a classroom. It can truly replace an HVAC unit with an HVAC unit. So, whatever existed, existed. So, there's, there's different funny, so if you're doing different things, we very well could be out to a vote to repair, back to remodel, renovate, as opposed to repair what already exists. And that's also another dynamic to this whole thing. But, Director Long, I too have heard the same thing that you're hearing. Same with this building too. I mean, again, but it's weighing that too. Everybody has, we're trying to be very cautious not to exercise our individual opinions into the, into any space at this time.
Superintendent Song?
And we're also trying to make sure that there's nothing left off the table to discuss. So, could we build a new bus garage someplace? Maybe, like, if that's what the recommendation and the community decides, and you all decide. So, it's, it's this tricky place of saying, what's gonna be most efficient, most effective for the work that we need to do in this district? And that's why the complexity of this is pretty intense. And this data really helps at least give us a baseline to current reality of our current spaces being used in the current way that they're being used.
Director Long?
Oh, sorry, I have another question. Will there be something similar to this, like, with our other assets that we might have in the district? Like, we have all those buses, and I know some of them are probably aging out. Are there other assets that we have, like this big assets like that in the district that we need to look at and be aware of for possible repair or maintenance or doing away with or?
So, I, with the buses, our invent, the district-owned inventory is dwindling and aging. But we certainly have that. As far as estimating repairs, probably not. But we certainly have the age and useful life. Every year, for accounting purposes, we do, within, within our financial statements, are, is essentially the depreciation of assets. So, everything that's asset-tagged, what we have, what gets depreciated, what remains existing. What, the difference between the assessments, what you're seeing now, is repair or replacement. We don't have that. We have what we purchased, we have what we own. We have how it's depreciated on an accounting standard. And what remains, that's what we have right now. Like, I could give you that today. If we were going to do an investment of repair and everything, that would, that would be a different look. Does that answer your question? And if you're looking for something specific, please identify that to help me address it. Because I'm not thinking of anything beyond the bus list, other than what we already have as identified as district assets that we could ration on an accounting schedule.
Yeah, I was just thinking of the buses, but then I was thinking there possibly could be other things, big item, things like buses that are in our district. But if we're doing away with all of our buses, then that brings the question to a bus garage, which would probably be a, a road conversation.
And we do have, like, we have district vehicles, right? Like, we do have shop trucks. We do have, I mean, we do have, again, that inventory. Happy to provide the inventory of those kind of assets that we have. Again, to estimate, we can give you depreciation. We can give you still what is accounting standard useful life. Like, if it's a five-year asset and we're two years in, you're gonna see there's three years left, and it's probably going to need to be replaced. That's what we have. We can certainly do that. Like, I could, I could provide that to you very soon, because we do that annually as part of our audit. And I'm happy to do that.
That brings me to a question, just out of curiosity. When you talk about the assets such as vehicles or those kind of things that, you know, not the building piece of it, this may be a really silly question to ask, but do we have replacement schedules then? I mean, we've been talking about repair schedules, but I'd never heard, when I was mayor of the city, we, everything had a replacement sort of, end of five years, you retired the cop car, end of certain period of time. Are we doing that with any of the stuff in our district? Or is it just, because things are so tight? It's Band-Aids and paper clips and wait till it's absolute.
Absent, I would say, absent the, a curriculum cycle. Because I have seen a curriculum cycle. Like, this is when we review the materials and do whatever. I have, it doesn't see, it's not to say it doesn't exist. I have yet to find that document that says we're being planful.
Okay, thank you.
Other than tech, other than tech, because the tech levy, yes.
Great, great, great. Thank you. That's, that's very informative.
Okay, you're good?
Can I ask, maybe a request, that as, because, again, the ten-year plan and Director had, Director Long had come forward with 287's plan. The board already approved that. That's going to be the same trajectory we're on, right? I will be in front of you. You will be looking at essentially this document again, the resolution, all of, all of the bits that go with that. That's going to start getting teed up at the next meeting. Should you have questions, concerns, adjustments, any other thoughts, I'm going to proceed as is unless I hear otherwise. So, just know that it's coming. It's gonna be moving forward to the next meeting. That's the plan. So, if you, any, any other input that you would like or need me to provide, I'm happy to do so. Just please let me know to keep with the cadence of approval. Ultimate approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Director Bassett?
So, that brings me to a thought, and that is that, at a time when there was a decision that we needed to downsize the district because of a combination of enrollment and cost and other things, I, you know, the pathway or the road to that kind of thought decision is murky. And one of the reasons is somewhat murky is that, when we talked about it in terms of our potential cost-saving measure, we realized, and you certainly mentioned it, Superintendent, that the timing for something like that needs to be pushed off. We could have contemplated in the, in the now, as we've been moving along with what we were doing, reconciling the challenges of the past and trying to visioning the immediate future. However, the future of where enrollment and capacity, or lack of, lack of need, need, is, continues to be murky. And we haven't discussed it, but I, I just wonder about that. At some point in the future, what, is there a sweet spot for a conversation like that? Is it a year from now? Is it six months from now? Because based on what we heard from Hazel Reinhardt and the indicators that we have about just birth weight and other things, and they roll in a drop, that, everybody's experience, and we have chat. And what the ideal size is, for example, for middle school. There are, there are some desired, desired sizes for some buildings, you know, some program. So, I'm just wondering about that. And not for an answer right now, but so from, for some contemplation about that and some visioning outward about when that might land. Because I'm not a big one, but wait till the last minute and start talking about something when you can, might need twelve months, or you might need eighteen months to do it.
Well, I'll respond to that. Director Bassett, that's the reimagine target process. So, I think, going back to Director Long's comment, is I wanna, I wanna be sure that we are bringing conversation here along the way. That question about enrollment. We saw, you saw the demographer, the data that she brought forward. One of the exercises preliminarily we did with the vision team, and certainly is the same thing we could do with y'all, is, as they studied, we said, what do you think? Given what you know, given what you heard, where do you think we're gonna be in terms of enrollment? And that's maybe something we need to bring back here. So, we have your perspective on that as well. I think that, that also does flow into the assumptions and the budgeting, you know, that. So, the time is now. The time, this whole process, and that's what we're doing with that visioning team, that they'll bring recommendations here, is to look at enrollment, is to look at building capacity, is to look at and say, we're gonna be operating two middle schools, four middle schools, two K-8 buildings, one other middle school, one high school, two high schools? Like, what are all the things that we've gotta vet? So that ultimately in September, there's recommendations that you're not gonna say, whoa, 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 whoa. And that's, and that's my job, is to make sure that I do exactly what, what was requested.
So, you know, so that, which goes to the point, because I think that was one of the first things that I asked about, about closure of buildings. And at that time, the potential for doing that, because it's a cost-saving measure, it didn't really turn on the future of the demographers' information. It kind of turned on where we are right now. And are we operating at optimal capacity for what the recommendations are for certain-sized buildings? In fact, I think that's the place that I'm.
And we, and we have that information right now. We have the data to say, at what buildings are we at capacity? We can, we can bring that back to, we know in our high schools, we're really under capacity right now.
Okay, I guess all I'm saying is that we haven't really asked the board to have that conversation. That's all I'm saying.
Yep, and the process, so, so just, I wanna be really, really clear, you know? And I think originally, when a question came to me, and I don't remember if it was you, Director Bassett, but I know when people in the community have asked me early in November about closing buildings, we said, we don't have time. From the time we heard about the $21 million budget deficit, we didn't have time to make decisions at that point without studying, without doing this, with being able to do boundary changes and staffing changes. We did not have time to make those changes prior to the start of next full year. That's why we engaged in this process and created this process. So, we have a community team that would be doing the study and doing the work, ultimately bringing forward recommendations to the board.
And so, let me just say this. And I think that everybody, when we talked about it, everybody kind of said, okay, and we moved on. So, I'm bringing it back right now. So, that's why I'm talking about it now, as opposed to bring it up over and over and over again, because I heard what you said, and I have been agree with it. You know, but where we are right now is, I guess, I feel like this is maybe a time for us to think about some dovetailing of the work. Because I think that's not something that another group of people goes off and figures out. I, I don't believe in that. I think that this is something that the board should be involved in as well, because we, like, we double work. If we're gonna be talking about facilities and those kinds of things, so that's something to contemplate.
That's the direction I need. It's not just something, because, because right now, well, and that's what I'm saying. I need that direction, because we've set up a process. I think we've been really, really clear about what's happening with that process, who's engaged in the process. I agree 100% with what Director Long said. We, I have to make sure we're bringing things to you like we did tonight, like we did with Hazel Reinhardt, like we can with the capacity. So, make sure that we got it.
I think we're talking about two different things. What I'm talking about is, if we're gonna have to land someplace where the board has to do some visioning, that's a joint thing. To vision where we end up and what the facilities look like is a joint endeavor. The carrying it out is something we absolutely will look to do to make sure happens. But I'm saying that I think some of the vision and some of the discussion, at some future point down the road, the board needs to be involved in that. You know, so that's just all I'm saying.
Again, I'll need direction on that, because that's not.
That's how, that's how anything happens.
That's not how the current system and processes are.
But that we're talking about down the road. We're talking about as we go forward to contemplate some kind of change. We're not talking about do that today and tomorrow, that that is supposed to happen.
But recommendations are designed to come to you in September. So, I.
And then, yeah, maybe it's post, post, post that to talk about what does the immediate future look like? I didn't suggest anything, you know, that was not what you're doing. I just expressed an interest, and not more than just an interest. I think it's important.
Okay, to be clear, the visioning team is doing, I mean, it's all these people from the community, representing the entire community. There's a careful process that was done to select the people to represent the areas of the community and demographics of the community. And they are. And so, they will be bringing their recommendations to us in September. And in September, we will carefully go through them and examine them. And we will have their background information that they are getting, which, as it comes through, we need to be studying. But the community input is separate from, I mean, they give us their information, and the board makes decisions based on what we get, out of them. And then your hand is up first.
Yeah, so I kind of have two parts. So, I know when the demographer came, there were questions that I kind of had about, you know, kind of wanting to pick other board members' brains about, now, what does this mean to us, that this person shared? So, yeah, I do think, like, that would be good to, at some point, have a conversation about that information that was shared by that person. The other part is too, I think, yeah, we are lacking in, like, how, how do we get there as a board? Where we're like, this is the direction we want things to go in. Because I would agree, I feel like there are a lot of areas where we have just left the superintendent to be like, and we're not playing our role as what we should be as a school board. And she has even said that tonight about, you know, us giving her direction. And so, I feel like there have been lots of times where we've left the superintendent without direction. So, how do we change that dynamic so that that's something that we are doing?
And I just want to clarify, thank you. And I just want to clarify, I was only asking for direction. If you, if all of a sudden, there is not support for what we've been doing since November, to set up a process and to lead a process and get 17,000 members of our community engaged in the process. So, I just need the direct, the only direction I need right now is if you all are saying, we don't support what you're doing with the reimagine, and we, as a board, wanna make this decision. And I'm not hearing that, but I also don't want us to get to September and for board members to say, we didn't have a role in that, so we aren't gonna support or consider these recommendations. I know my role is to make sure that I'm bringing you along and we're, you're understanding and have the information, have the opportunity to answer questions, if you've still got some, and that you can have whatever conversations you want around it. I just wanna be sure that everyone understands the flow of this process that's been laid out for six months.
Excuse me?
Wow, this guy's gonna pick you and ask, I just, I'm.
Well, I'm just doing. I just wanna say for myself that the questions are good, except for what I need as a board member is, I need to see all the information coming forth first. I know that the, the discussion of what we do with the information comes after we get the information. And personally, I support the reimagine committee, and I support the information all, all coming to us as it is, because the work that I'm seeing being done.
to us as it is, because the work that I'm seeing being done is providing the data for us to have the discussion about the future of the district. That will be the work of the board. Right now, we've got, I mean, we say all these things about voice of the community, voice of the students, voice of this, and that's what we're doing. Right now, the Reimagine Committee is the voice of the community. And they're going to come forth and say, we studied this, and this is the, these are the recommendations we would like to present to you all, school board members. And then at that point, the responsibility to school board members is to take this volume of information, because it's a direction that has been pulled together by our superintendent, and then it's time for us to discuss it and come to a conclusion and make a decision. And if you don't agree with that, earlier this evening, you told me on a couple of different things what the role of the school board is. I'm going to add at this point that this is now the role of the school board, to take the information, excuse me, to take the information that's provided from the various groups that have been pulled together that we asked to be pulled together, and then from that pool of information, make a decision. If I'm wrong on that as being the process, somebody please correct me. But I do believe that that's what the process is, correct? Thank you.
You're granted privilege.
Yes. Here's the thing, you know, Director, first of all, the Chair and Director Bowman, I really take exception to you turning and talking to me, but this is a point of privilege.
I'm listening.
I take exception to you addressing me that way. There is nothing in anything that I said that was opposite of what you were talking about. I clearly said at some point in the future, when we get to that place, when we talk about it, because the board has not talked about some of the things that have been presented to us in just a free-flowing way. The board has responsibility to talk to each other, no matter what the administration is doing. It should be in concert with and should be along with it, but we have that responsibility. And I really take exception to when I say things, anybody else can say something, and this is a pattern that I noticed. And then all of a sudden, I'm shushed, I'm doomed, I'm this. And all I said was, you know, just like others have done, go ahead and let Director Bowman say, go first. We all do that all the time. I take exception to being treated rudely and to get a lecture and hands up in my face when I, I don't deserve it, because I'm not rude like that to anybody else. And I really take exception to it. I've had it.
Director Bassett, all due respect, you were interrupting, and you were speaking without being recognized this evening, and you were interrupting. That is why my hand went up.
That's not true, because she would, you know, you were looking to see who you were going to speak, address, and I said, go ahead and talk with her. That's what I said to you. You know, and so...
No, that's okay. We're going to stop. We're going to stop. My point that I was going to be saying was I support the work that that group is doing, and I am looking forward to what's coming from them in September. I believe it will be the voice of the community. And if anybody else would like to voice support, I would be fine.
Well, I had not stepped, and I was talking, and you kind of jumped in and started talking. And so, and really, what I, which is what I started off saying is that I support, you know, what you're doing now, and I reference when we talked in the past, and like we talked about closure. If we're talking about the tenure plan, is this a good place for us to kind of think about when, might we talk about that? And I believe that's exactly what I said. You know, I mean, I didn't say anything that was contrary to what you presented or that we needed to do something different, none of that.
Good that we're all the same team. I just wanted to...
Well, I'm pretty sure.
Let's talk about budget questions.
Excuse me, Superintendent, I'm speaking now. And I'm going to take a point of privilege, because one of the things that I have suffered through for quite some time is that when I say something, it gets piled on and misconstrued and then reported as something I didn't even say. And that's not my behavior. Now, I have a personality and I'm allowed that, just like every other person in this room is allowed a personality. And I'm allowed mine as well. I'm not rude to other people. I might start talking, but that's just a habit, and I quickly stop. I don't do any of that stuff to other people. And I take exception to having all, meaning the comments I make, being mischaracterized. And, you know, one of the things we talk about is not casting dispersions or making assumptions about the motives of others. I have had it when people take exception to what my motives are. When I speak, I talk about what I'm thinking and what my questions are. When somebody immediately starts attacking me about what I think, I don't do that to other people. I don't say whatever, they can think whatever they want to think, and then they get to vote. That's the same privilege I expect to have at this table. I am done with all the rest of it, and I don't need anybody interrupting me. This is a board conversation. And I'm not happy anymore, because I haven't seen you do it to anybody else. And I would never do that to you, nor did I when I was Chair, and it's not done to anybody else.
Chair, I'm going to ask that you can just move on to the next segment, because Superintendent is on. All right.
Budget questions. Thank you, Mary.
Outstanding for you.
Thanks, Mary. You've been great your time.
Great report.
Great report. Thank you for your time.
Outstanding. Budget questions.
There were several questions that came in Sunday afternoon, Monday morning, and the team spent much of yesterday between graduations, getting responses and information to y'all so that you would have all that information prior to the board meeting tonight. So hopefully that's provided some clarification on some of the questions that you may have had, but we're happy to take any other questions that you have.
I'm just looking forward to, thank you. I'm just looking forward to reading through the document in detail, and I'm looking forward to putting it next to the document that you also presented earlier this evening with the really cruel graphics with the dollar bills. And that's when, at that point, that's the document I've been waiting for, to really come up with some questions, because everything else is just speculative. I've been planning to see the money in front of me. So if I have any questions, I'll have them, I'll have questions to you by Friday, Tuesday, like by the first part of next week, is that, would that be good, Mary?
Yeah, our goal, like I said, I don't, I want to be sure that we get to the June 16th meeting, that questions have been answered up to that date, so that as we come forward, you've got all the information. Again, that doesn't mean that you're going to agree with everything, but you have the information.
I guess I want to say something as a point of personal privilege, but then I have a follow-up. I have a question. But it does not feel good when you sit in here and then somebody calls a lawyer on you to make you stop doing something. We are all elected officials. I would really like that practice to stop and us to figure out how it is that we are going to engage with each other. That just has continued to bother me. And it feels very picked on, very bullied, very singled out. And it happened again tonight, but I'd like to move on from that right now.
And your point?
Yeah. So my question about the budget is, I had asked this earlier at the business meeting, what are we going to do about the emails that we have received from community members about things that they are requesting or questions that they have about what the budget is? Because that's also, I feel like, community input. How are we addressing that as a board? I don't feel like we ever sat to talk about, we got that petition, we didn't sit to talk about, what does this petition mean to us as board members? We've had the family literacy program come, you know, and be very active, send us several things, even a request of, could we hold off for a year and then next year, they would spend this year figuring out how they could sustain themselves, you know, with grants or whatever it might be? Like, when do we get to have those discussions about some of that information that has been brought to us from the community and what that might mean for the budget going forward?
Well, the decision was made on getting rid of the family literacy program and both people are being serviced by other communities, by others.
So we, first, when we do, in the community education, when we do our budget review, like in my budget review paper, I bring in my advisory council, talk about potential changes that come forth. They have obviously asked questions. Is that the third? One of the things that came up in that discussion was the inclusion of families, because of the cost and the sustainability of the program. Met with staff, met with students and families, and then we provided them with additional options. You know, since that time, we've been working diligently to serve those students with other options. A number of those students were, A, out of the 27 or so families that were being served, have graduated this year and going to kindergarten, will be into, will be into other businesses anyway. The remaining, I think it was 14 families, of those 14, seven have already been reassigned or decided to either participate in programming of learning center or participate in RLA mentorship program, which is for daycare. So there's seven additional families who opted not to do that, opted not to see those other options. I think that, as I said, through the listening sessions, and I, hey, I've also met with students on site from the family life program. There's this message that students won't be able to continue their adult education journey, and that narrative is not true. You know, most students are very capable of continuing their learning through adult education. We were one of the remaining districts to have family life program. Those programs have been cut across various districts throughout the state, over the course of years, for the same reasons. There's not a lot of students participating overall, and the costs are significantly high. Even the, I heard the, I read the proposal about partnering with the districts. The number one district that they started by partnering with was ICO, which is right next door. They closed their program last year. They had four to six students, and it was called, it cost too much. So I've done the research. I also, you know, I now support the early learning director and in the process of doing it. I didn't make the decision just because I wanted to. We worked together as a team to make the recommendation based on what's sustainable.
So can I follow up to that? Because still, that didn't really answer my question. When do we as a board discuss these things that come to us as a board? That's really what I'm trying to get at.
Well, I don't know when we discuss them as a board, because it's actually an administrative decision, it's not a board decision.
And so we are supposed to be the oversight of the school district. So when do we get a chance to sit there and discuss it as a board, decide what our feelings are around it, decide what other questions or information we might need as a board about it?
Can I take this? But I was just saying that I think it's a little bit of a slippery slope, though. I mean, are we going to be discussing whether they add another section of AP English at a high school, or if they, you know, that doesn't, that's not our role, though. Our role is governance, our role is supervising our one staff member, and, you know, whether or not we would have made that same decision, you know, that's why Anthony and, right, are in their positions to, because they have a better understanding of all that day in, day out stuff. But I wouldn't know if it's appropriate to have another AP English at Cooper. Just making it up. But you know what I'm saying? Like, that's just not...
I get what you're saying, yes, but that's my hint, it's a good question that I'm asking.
Well, what I, what I'm trying to say is that I don't know that it's our role to discuss it. That's, that's what I'm saying.
When it's brought to us...
Director, would you tell them, would you just point to you?
Say it again? Yes, sir. Yeah. I think I will agree that, yes, at some point, board input is necessary in some of the general discussions. However, I think timing is also critical in such cases. So with this very program, when I came, or when I joined the board, I've asked, you know, based on the listening, the concerns and the emails, I've asked, Director Anthony, you know, is this program only here in this district? And we were the last one to cut it out. And based on what he just, you know, referenced back to all of us, I'm like, okay, well done, you know, the decision you made was probably the right decision to make, right? So I think if we want our voice in some of these inputs, our timing should be probably better and also sooner than when the program is already phased out in this case and the next two years already starting.
Director Bassett?
So I think that the reality is that, I think that there's some misunderstanding about the board having discussions about issues. Part of the, part of visioning includes both the board collectively and the administration, usually that's in the person of the superintendent, unless she brings in somebody who has more graduate knowledge and she wants them to share some things with us. That is important, because, for example, because the board could say, because we have so much diversity, people like to say this, because we have so much diversity in our community, and because we have such a high immigrant population, could we make a decision that we want to really do a robust networking or outreach and bring in more families that might fit this program and market to it? That could be a decision that we might make. Is it a decision we might make, depending on where we are right now with the numbers? Maybe not. But I'm saying to you, collectively to us, discussions among board members matter. It is not a slippery slope. This current board has been teetering and tiring with role and all of that. It comes up all the time. I will, I've gone through several budgeting iterations, and I'm sure many of you have as well, and some of the organizations that you're a part of have been. People who make decisions talk with each other. And one of the challenges is that when you're trying to get things on the agenda, and that, and we would clearly market a board discussion. It would be a board discussion, knowing that any implementation would happen with the superintendent. We cannot cut off board discussion about topics, because we pre-identify and think that, well, it's just the superintendent's job to do it. Because that's not the way it works. Visioning is a joint endeavor. Now, if people want to just not do that and talk, because how you get to that is talking through things and hearing what your colleagues say. My opinion has been changed over the years many times, based on what colleagues have said about a given issue, because we talked about it. Talking is, there's no harm in talking about something. But when you, what ends up happening is when you put something forward, you want to discuss it at a work session, and it doesn't get any traction, then it ends up coming up that somebody has to go another way to try to get something on the agenda, and the agenda belongs to the school board and the administration. It doesn't belong to only the administration. It belongs to the school board, not Chair, not Vice Chair alone. It belongs to the board. That's why you send information to the Chair and to the Vice Chair to have, you know, to have some contemplation, some weight of what you've heard, not to just summarily say, we're not doing this, we're not doing that, we're not doing the other. I'm not saying that you're doing that, but I'm saying that's not the role of Chair. It's not. And we're not a school. Everybody's an adult, you know? And if people want to talk about something and we can get it on the agenda and do it in a timely fashion, that should be something that's possible to happen. You have a finger on me.
Yeah, just a quick thing. I think for me too, it's understanding the decisions, that we can help get that out in the community is one thing, as opposed to making the decision. And I think that for this example, you know, exactly, Director Williams has certainly explained both the reasoning and the, and the impact and what they've done to mitigate impact. So that's why I'm just, I don't, I just don't know what else there is to discuss. And I'm not trying to be, I'm not being facetious, but I just, I really, I guess maybe I'm just missing a piece here or something.
Well, just a piggyback on that.
Director Bassett?
Well, I think that there was, that, what I've talked about is just an example, but I think what she was asking for is to be able to talk about things, a variety of things. So I don't think that requires me to say, look, you know, given, you know, given what you just said, because you were talking about the specific thing about what Director Williams had said, and that wasn't what she was asking. I brought that example up.
Well, I brought the example too, amongst other examples, but, yes, that's right. Like, I just want us to be able to, when can we have these discussions? And yes, they do need to happen in a timely fashion, but there's been so much happening where it's like, we're not being allowed to have those discussions. And then the community needs to know. You know, if a decision is made and we've decided that nobody's going to use red paper in our district anymore, and administration decided that, and then if we all agree as school board that that's, then the community should know that piece, that we all... That we all agreed, the administration decided, no more red paper, and the school, all the school board members talked about it and said, no more red paper. Like, then it's, it's clear. It's clear that where, where that's going to go in the community. It's clear that we've had this discussion and that's our decision. But right now, it's not because we have all these places where it's like, well, where are you, when are we going to discuss it as a school board? And people bring up things. I mean, we don't. And there is lots of questions around this whole budget that people have been asking for discussions around, and we haven't had them, along with the community input and the emails that we get.
If I can just chime in about the, the role of the board. I think that there continues to be some misunderstanding about the differentiation between the board's role and the administration's role, that the board's role isn't to, sort of, pass, make a decision on decisions that administration has already made within their purview, that if there is something that required board input, the administration would make a recommendation and come to the board with that, with that recommendation. But if a decision has already been made by administration on something within their purview, that doesn't need to come in front of the board to be ratified.
Actually, that was what I was going to say, that we have a superintendent that we have hired and trust, and she has her cabinet, and people who have all of the information and the background and expertise, and they can see the big picture, and they have made the decisions. And we can't second guess them because they have more information than we have. They have been hired to make those decisions. And they have informed us of the decisions that they have made. And so we can listen to the community, but the community does not have the biggest picture like are the people that we have hired to make those decisions. The community has the emotions, and they have experience, and they have stories to tell. And would we cut these programs if we could afford everything? No. But we are in financial straits. And tough decisions have been made by our administrators. And I support the decisions that our administrative team is making because this one has to be done. Superintendent?
Yeah, I think the other thing that I just wanted to remind board members again, I've never experienced $21 million in budget cuts before. I've experienced three, four, and five million. And anytime any district deals with budget cuts, there's going to be people who, anything we put out, you all heard some things about, whether it was IB or Orchestra or any of the things that we've talked about over the last five, five months, there's been emails, don't do this, don't do this, don't do this. And, and we fully expect that. That's part of the process. In some of those cases, I think IP is a really good example. You know, talked about it at study session, got input. We made a, I came back with a different recommendation. And that was, you know, it needed input, it was looking at costs, it was looking at, at a lot of things. So I also just want to be really clear that, well, right now, you know, the, the notion of, of board, and you can talk about anything you want to talk about, talk about petition, if you want to talk about family literacy. Again, what I need so that I can direct my team and collaborate with my team is if, if there are, if there's information that you don't have to ultimately make, take action on the board recommendation that we'll bring forward in two weeks, we have to get that information through. Because the last thing I want is for you to be up here and say, I can't vote on this because I didn't get the information. Anthony has provided information over and over about the family literacy program. People aren't all going to like it. People aren't all going to agree with it. But if there's information you don't have, that's on us to provide to. So because, and, and some of you may decide that you just simply don't agree with the decisions and don't approve the budget. That's your vote. I want to be sure that tonight, we have an opportunity, because we allocated the time for it, to answer outstanding questions that you have related to the budget. So I just want to be sure that if you've got questions, we get a chance, you've got people here that can answer it.
And, you know, Superintendent, thank you. And, and I just want to say this again. I think Director Long's request that the board talk about things is legitimate and is totally separate from us people trying to do the superintendent's job. That's not what I heard. You know, and I think that it's healthy and should happen. And that's just what it is. That's what the board does. Now, I, I will also say that I also, the people who are elected, who sit around this table, were elected. Our attorney was not. And I too take exception to having comments inserted into our meeting. Because people get to have their own opinions. And people marshal themselves and if they're treated with respect, what I have observed over the years, have been a lot of disrespect the last couple of years. But what I have observed over the years is that people respect their opinions of others, and they speak to what they want, if they, they agree with. They say when they don't agree with something, they vote on it, and we move on. We don't have legal intervention to stop a conversation. And it is used judiciously. And it's not appropriate at all. This is a work session for the board. And so I, I just want to echo that because I feel, feel about it too. I feel it's inappropriate, and it's disturbing, and it's insulting.
Are there any other questions, budget questions? I'm just watching the clock. There's twenty-five minutes, and we've got several other agenda items here that we should be able to get through.
I, I don't, but some of the things that were said today are so harmful that I would like to find a mechanism by which we can, I mean, we can address the harm that continues to be done. These are not invitations to discussions. We are seeing, we are seeing, my feelings and opinions is that these are brow-beating episodes, that if we agree with others, then we're all okay. If we don't agree, we just sit at the table and beat it, and beat it, and beat it, and beat it, even if there isn't a majority of people that want to keep beating on it. That's what I'm asking for us to learn how to manage. And regarding asking help from an attorney, it's because if you want to call a point, which I haven't called one, but I also feel harmed at these meetings when we can't get to the business of the students. And right now, we're on the loop, we're on the loop, we're on the loop. And we're also at this point where we've been all of our brow-beating with the stuff we never talk about anything. We massage the same thing. So if we can move forward, great, let's move forward. Otherwise.
I think.
Otherwise, I'm just going home. Because I'm tired of being brow-beaten.
Yeah, I think that, that's probably the topic for professional development that's coming up.
Yeah, that would be great.
We need to move on on our agenda that we have.
Are there any other outstanding budget questions?
Yeah.
Because I would much rather have a, we can talk about in here than have a slow questions coming. We're here right now.
I got one from Director Long.
Yeah, so I had asked at one of the other meetings, can we see the budgets that the buildings came up with for themselves?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, that's, that's not part of this budget, or this, the decisions that you're making right now, you have all of the district budget. That is leadership role, that is the role of management. The choices, the decisions they make about how to staff their buildings are what we empower them to make. So, so that isn't something that we, what we will have given you is what our overall staffing allocation has been. So I don't think that that's appropriate for the board to, to have that be part of the information that you use. We'll, we'll provide the staff.
Not part of the 2020 test, reaches to the overall budget.
Yeah, yeah. And again, I think that, that goes to the role of, again, management and governments. Just one quick thing about the, it would be, I think it'd be helpful for us to know where there are things that may be controversial, but just like the example of closing family literacy, which maybe you didn't know was going to be controversial. But like split classrooms that people have talked, you know, so knowing where they are and, and why they are, you know, some of those things so that we can talk to some of that and understand that when it gets brought up. I don't know what those things are. I just made that one up, those split classrooms. Well, no, and that has been a question. And I think at the time a question came from a board member, we had seven split class, multi-age classrooms across the district. And I don't know, given staffing decisions, Amy, do you know if we still have seven?
We currently still have seven, but I can't tell you come fall with enrollment where that will line up.
Sure.
Because enrollment will fluctuate from now until September. And honestly, it will fluctuate until fifteen days in a school year.
And, and that, that may have been a bad example, but if there is something controversial like the Wave.
The counselor, the counselors have been definitely, you know, I think the board got another email from one of our elementaries that you've gotten several from. And that is a building that if you look at the base model and the service model, they didn't have a lot of additional FTE to make decisions on. I'd say the, the Wave program was more about where was it going to be moved, right? You know, again, I think the, the role of management is saying, you know, especially, I want to speak to the, and Bob, I might need you on this, to speak to the Zachary Lane questions that we've had, about moving that Wave program. And the concern was, and the question that we got is what, how was that in the best interest of kids? Or is that in the best interest of kids? And actually, Bob, helping out with the population of the students in that program, but I think we're moving them back to their home schools.
Yeah, so specific to that, right? So as I'm learning specifics and quite frankly, going in and asking a lot of questions myself as to the why and what's going on. I'm sorry. So if you look at, if you look at that Wave program, Zachary Lane, the, the way that I understand it is, the kids that are in that Wave program make up currently two rooms of Center Base. All of the, the students in that program, with the exception of, I believe, three are either, their home school is either Northport or.
Meadow Lake.
Yeah, Meadow Lake. Right? So when we talk about how do we make decisions about kids, from my perspective, one of the things is, does it make sense for our Center Base kids? If we can put them in their home schools, does it make sense? If, if we can, yes. And there might be other considerations, right? We've got two schools that are really high need schools in our district. So that comes into play as well. That said, we also know that those two schools also provide most of the referrals into that program based on the needs to the schools. So essentially, if you think about that, you take Meadow Lake, we've got students who come in that have needs, that they get identified. Once they get identified and they need Center Base, what, what happens right now? We move them. Right? So the decision to do this was, can we find a solution where we're not moving the kids and we're allowing for this to take place back at home school? So essentially then, our Wave kids, that are Northport kids, are going to go to Center Base at Northport. The students that are, uh, home base is Meadow Lake are going to go to Meadow Lake. And the, the other three, the special ed team is going to make the best decision about what makes sense for those three that don't go, or don't have a home base, or the home base was Zachary Lane. Right? That's, that's really the hard part. I think, if I may expound just a little bit. So, you know, I, I know that, that we have an established kinds of relationship between myself and the board at this point. However, the experience that I've had has been quite a bit in reductions, school closures, program changes, program additions, consolidations, all of that. The only reason that I bring that up is the questions that are coming up at the board table are the right questions. Your questions about can I get more information? I know I'm talking, but okay, we'll yell that later. Yes. We were, but, but they're good questions, but this, coming new in from the outside, Robbinsdale is in a ridiculously unique situation right now. Right? Because you don't just have one complex thing going on at the moment. You have, the moons have a line of complex things going on. What the, what the problem that I have seen in multiple districts, I've worked with multiple boards, is because you're not in the trenches doing the work, the anxiety is real. Right? It is because you, you don't have all the information all the time, which is why I get back to, the questions aren't great questions. All we can do is try to take the questions that, from, at least in my experience, if it's from community that you've brought up, are those with such concentration and volume that the board as a whole wants us to attack those questions and give them back to you because it's just, it's going to influence, the potential to influence a board decision. Or a board changing its mind saying, I know we said this before to, to Superintendent Salvo's point, but actually, no, don't touch special ed. Don't do anything with it. It's off the chart. We know what we said before. The board as a whole can do that, right? You all have a vote. But until that point, we have to take the direction. And, and it's, the difficult part is trying to stay on task with these difficult conversations. Because it is, there's a ton that goes, just acknowledging that, there's a ton that goes into it. Everybody's got their own personal thing they're bringing to the table. Why you ran for the board, why you're here, why you're sitting at the table. And that's the hard part, that's just staying on track, but asking these questions. We'll do our best to explain them. Right? I'll keep going out to the schools, folks keep going out to the schools, finding what we need to find to give you the information that you believe that you need to make the decisions. Might not be perfect. We might have to go on a second time. But this is, this is going to be messy. And it's gonna, we are moving faster than you would typically need to move because you're not just dealing with one school year impact. You're dealing with multiple school year impacts on every decision right now in this school district. That is an anomaly for the level of stuff that we're trying to accomplish.
And the reality is, the decisions that we have made have affected staffing, which those staffing decisions were made three months ago and have already been done. And we have moved forward with those decisions, and those decisions have gone to the board for approval.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, I really appreciated Superintendent and, and Kristin. I really appreciate it. When I propose a question to you, you hear my question. And, and it's usually about data, you know? And I really appreciate that when it's possible, you do it. When there's a challenge to it, you say what that challenge is. And you don't take it personal. None of this is personal. So when, when folks take things personal and, and talk to me, if, if you don't, if what I feel personal, it, it brings up stuff that's unnecessary. Because most of the things that I talk about are just questions. And when other people jump into my question and start challenging me about my question, I will challenge them. You know, and so I, I think that that's very important. Because when people talk about feeling hurt and beat up, that, that's, other people have those feelings too. They're not unique. You know, and so I listen to them. I hear you asking a question, great, I listen to your question. Because I want to know what you're under. And I want to know what the answer is when somebody gives it to you. I want that strength and respect. You don't have the question? Don't ask it.
So I kind of felt the same thing here when I asked about being able to see building budgets. And there was a resounding nope. And then Aviva brought up a point about, but what about the hot topic things? Then it was a lot of, oh, yeah, yeah. So how do, how, then what is it that you need exactly from me? The fine details of what the hot topics are that I'm hearing from buildings? And why maybe I want to see that information? from buildings and why maybe I want to see that information? I guess I'm not understanding. I just, I just feel like there isn't positive intent in things that I'm, I'm asking.
So you're asking to discuss the family literacy, which we got information on. Is it, you want to discuss about school nurses or?
Yeah, we could discuss that too. I mean, that's been brought up from other school board members too?
My, my thing is, what would be the point?
And seeing the buildings budgets that they
No, and discussing the school nurses.
For example. To making sure that there's coverage in those buildings and to, so that I fully understand what these changes are that were made and how they might not be harmful for students.
In addition to the information that we have gotten?
Yeah. What has been answered?
So what, what more do we need?
Well, to talk about the nurse thing, I mean, there's a lot of things to talk about, but you're kind of distracting me from what I had asked about. There was a question about, are there any final budget things? And my question was, I'd like to see what the buildings did with their budgets. You know, I don't know what the problem is in me trying to understand what buildings are doing with their budgets. You know, I do understand that each building operates differently. I've seen enough of these Ardeal Pride things to know that all of our buildings are different. So I get that they're going to have different needs. I would like to know, see what it was that they did to budget themselves. It's, it's already written down on paper because they had to submit it someplace. So what would be the harm in us looking at that? I, I just, I guess I don't see the harm in that at all. I mean, I get today, we saw in our deal pride one, they do all these garden things, you know? So they're going to budget differently because of the garden aspect that they have incorporated into their school. We had another school come and they brought a lot of tech things. And then, yeah, I was able to talk to another elementary school. They said that, that's not the focus at their school. They don't have a lot of tech things. So then they didn't budget for this tech person to do those tech things. I would just like to see them to know that. Tells also a narrative about that school. And I don't know what the harm is in being able to see that. It's already done and completed, you know?
Well, I don't see harm in it. I just don't see that that is helpful information at this time to vote on the overall budget was my, I think. Can you, you had your agenda?
I, I think it's, I think the answer to what I hear you asking about, can we see how, how building principals have staffed their buildings, programmatically staffed their buildings? We could do that. We would most likely need to wait until the fall, when we know for sure how everything has fallen out. And then, as a board, we would need some direction, not on the information. But how do you want to do that? Here's where I, I see the danger, having been a building principal and been in charge of that. If all you get is my staffing sheet, there are so many things that could be misinterpreted, misread, read into depending upon who is looking at that, that if we're going to do that, we have to be willing to open ourselves up to all of the scrutiny for every one of our building leaders to potentially have that information be conveyed in a way that it was not intended. Because the numbers on the page do not at all reflect the why. So I would say, yes, we can do it. We have to figure out a mechanism for how do we get the information along with every building principal, right? So as an example, I have done this with elementary principals and school board, where we've sat down at some point, same question. Talk to us about how you, as an elementary group, have staffed X. I know one of the biggest ones was media at the time. How did we come up with our media plans? So the elementary principals as a group came in, they met with the board and shared, just like we've done with other stuff that I've seen here. Here's what we did and why. And then I was able to say, at my building, I didn't staff it exactly like Kristen did in media, because here's the thing. I had a person who was half time here and half time here. And I could add these two together. So I didn't need the extra staff. If you saw that on a staffing sheet, the, if you know enough about what the numbers say, just to be dangerous, you'd say, oh, I can spend this money the same way that Kristen did, right? That's the danger to answer the question.
And, and I would also say that it, it under, I'm unwilling, I'm unwilling to provide that right now. Because I think it undermines what we ask our building leaders to do. It undermines the process that we empower each one of them to do with their staff to help make decisions. We're a district of shared leadership and our principals spend a ton of time working with their staff to help them prioritize decisions. And, and I don't want them to then be scrutinized, as Bob said, because their staff chose a counselor over smaller class sizes or an MTSS coordinator over a counselor. Or that's why we hire them. That's why we, we ensure that we've got really good people who are leading our buildings, who make those decisions. We can show you the FTE, right? I mean, that's, that's the model, the staffing model, because we, that, that's different. But again, that's the what. That's the question earlier in tonight. What's our base staffing model? What's our service delivery model for staffing, right? We talked about that in January sixth.
We talked, and again, February third?
And again, February third. So we've talked about that. And that's the what. How our leaders do that is the management side of things.
Right.
And that's what I hope that we can continue as a team sitting around this table, distinguish what's governance, what's governance questions, and what's management. And I think that some of the questions haven't felt to me like governance questions. They've been directing the management and decision making.
Kind of a two-part question. And then it first went to you. So we used to get the school improvement plans and a couple of years ago, they used to
They're all online.
Well, I'm just saying, we used to have a conversation about them, get them and have a conversation. That's my point. And so at the, and whether they all come in at once or they come in, you know, individually, is there able to do it or time, I don't know. But, but we, when we got those, we would get a presentation and hear from them. So my question really was to you about if, if you're looking for outcome and the school improvement plans at a given building, would that help you visualize kind of what's happening in the building? That's what came to my mind, not so much the staffing, but, you know, the results. Yeah, yeah, the results and if they're making progress. Because it was really helpful. And then it also gave those schools a chance to come to the meeting and brag on their school. They come and share their school improvement plan and they talk about, here's what we did and here's how much growth we, whatever they want to talk about. But it serves a lot of good purposes because it provides a visual for what's happening in that building. So you can get to know it. And they just magically stopped, you know? I mean, probably went around, around, talking about everything else, but you don't know that in the last couple of years. So, but I wondered if that would be something that would be helpful to you or?
Yeah, but I would still like to see what the building budget.
I hear you, but I'm just, I, yeah.
And I, I guess I disagree with some of the other statements that were made, but I don't need to bring that up now. I, I can move on with my lead.
Sorry.
But it'll still be a topic that I will bring up periodically.
I feel like an auctioneer, going once, going twice. Any more, any more questions related to the budget, getting information that we need to make a decision? One once, one twice. All right. Number six. Twenty-five, twenty-six, district strategic priorities.
Awesome. I think I briefly shared this two meetings ago. You've heard multiple times. You've heard actually nine different presentations throughout the course of the year as part of your governance role of the oversight of operations with different priority themed teams that were working on parts of, portions of the strategic plan. And I explained to you two meetings ago, I think, that the team ultimately, each had a charter, each had a summary, which included recommendations. We came together as an entire learning leader team to look at the prioritization, year one, year two, further out of that. We also aligned all of that with prioritization of professional development. And what's in front of you right now is the recommended priority work for next year. We, I would like to bring this forward for approval on June 16th. And know that we're working toward this now. We bring leaders together on June 10th. But I, I think anything here were things that we talked about as part of those presentations. So I just wanted to be sure that you were aware of that. What is there? Is there's nothing in, oh, is this, this is it? This is kind of what you were referring to, Helen, earlier when you're asking for something to be added to the work session?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. What, what are you asking? I can't quite hear you.
The strategic priority.
No, no, no. I, you know, we're supposed to, actually, you know, we're supposed to have a conversation about the super dis evaluation, the form that we had that was initially what the goals were that we worked on together.
And, you know, just to make sure that we all follow the process and we all stay engaged.
So we begin with this? Do you okay if I bring this forward?
This is great, Jeff.
Excellent, amazing.
Excellent.
And I am happy to excuse my team for the rest of this conversation. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you. And while they're leaving, I'm starting right away in the parking lot because time's ticking. Okay. School board parking lot, I want to.
Oh, I just want to make a suggestion about the process of the evaluation. Does it make sense to do an email aligning that for us?
We've got, we've got it. I am happy to speak to this when we get through the next two. I would actually delight in speaking to this when we get to it.
Okay. School board parking lot. In the old days, old days, a few years ago when I was doing the board, there was always a parking lot for topics that the board kind of wanted to get to, but there were so many other things, we couldn't get to it right away. And then we would revisit the parking lot and not, we don't care about that anymore. But yeah, that one we're going to move up. And so I want us, I want to say that parking lot again. And the old parking lot, the last time we talked parking lot was 2023 in January. And so, so if we can't get to something or something comes up that we're really interested in and we don't have time, I want a parking lot and I want to check at the end of every meeting, I want a list on the bottom of the work session for what's in the parking lot or what we should put on the parking lot. And for example, like the topics for our staff, our professional development. If some of these don't make the top two or three, I, I would say, okay, then maybe they go on the parking lot. And so I just, when I didn't want to like just start writing parking lot on an agenda, I want to have us put things.
Change people's reality.
I want, I want you to know where that's come, my ideas are coming from. It's not like just Greta just thought this up. It's what we used to have. And so.
It'll still be accused of it.
That's enough. We're going to move to, so if everybody's okay with just getting your parking lot and we'll, we'll, okay, move on. Yeah, okay.
Wait. So one question. So if we want something at, is it going to be a document that we're all going to add to? Or is it going to be something where we just email the chair if something comes up that we might want to? Or are we going to have a discussion here at the table about things to add to?
I think the board puts it in the parking lot. Okay? It's not, it's not just because I'm sold on this one topic and I want it on the parking lot. No, the board will put it on the parking lot. At least, at least enough people, like, like four people from the board want it on the parking lot that will merit getting put on the parking lot, I think. Because, and then we can revisit and move it of our agendas. It'll help us in agenda planning too. Okay, this is a topic for lunch. Sorry. Okay. Professional development. We have a date. See, I gave you all the sheet with the topics that were sent to me.
I was on, oh, I didn't know what that was.
Okay, I just gave it to you. So you had a spare minute and wanted to look at it. These, these are the topics that I was given. I was given topics, like multiple topics from the board of members. And I put everything down and I pretty much left it in the wording that was given to me. And as you read them, you'll see there actually is a lot of overlap in what people are hoping will happen with the board professional development. And so, since it's getting late, however, if you look at it, you can clump them together. You can give me your top, is top three, okay? Clump them together and get back to me. Since it's not till July, we don't have to figure this out tonight with little stickers and doing things. But I would like to know by within a week. Okay, so by next Monday, I would like to have from each of you, I think these topics go together and this is my top. I think these topics go together and that's my second. This one by itself. And I think, like, some of them are not going to take the whole time. Like a session to learn what edge climber can do, that is not going to take the entire, but it might be an interesting thing. Or how to do this or that. And so give me your top three. And assume that maybe we can do a couple of these.
Said Monday the night.
Monday the night. Give it to me by Monday the night. Dr. Ma?
So where does, I had talked about, you know, we had that session where we had some consultants come in.
Yes, thank you.
And we met with the teachers union, president of the teachers union, president of the principals union. And it was just you and I there and
Yes, what was it called?
The superintendent and HR.
Yep. So I have Betty and Nicole. I did follow up as
Betty and Nicole. And they, so, so these are two folks that have worked with a lot of different schools. One actually is an assessment guru. The other has worked with a lot of school districts implementing different leadership models. But I somehow got connected with them with grants and some networking and it hasn't cost a cent. And they've been amazing thought partners as we've thought about teaching and learning. And one of the tenants that they really use is this notion of if our goal, right, is to ensure that we have happy and proud and confident kids, they talk about the three-legged stool of that. They talk about board, the role of governance, the role of administration, and then the role of union representatives. So Ian part of our conversation, they invited us to have a conversation with our board chair, vice chair, union, teacher and principal reps, and then some of my team. And so they said that they would be happy to follow up with that. I, I don't know. I, I think it can live in some of this, you know? It really is, it would really be around some of that academic piece of what is, how do we all work together? I mean, it could kind of be some of the decision making stuff. I
Because then they also kind of talked about what our role was in these different things. So then that's why I'm like, well, where exactly would that fit in here? And also the conversation that we had, we didn't finish up the conversation. We only saw half of that. So it would be nice to know what the rest of their presentation was.
Okay, so I will add, I will send you a new one tomorrow. Then I will add that part on. You are correct. I put that, to put that one on.
What did you say? Can you say who they are?
Jen, yeah.
Yeah.
But I gave the two names.
Yeah, the two names. And it'll, it'll, you know, don't worry about that. You know, whether you're professional, not that they golf well or they golf poorly.
Jen, I, I mean, honestly, I, I don't have a ton of, I mean, it's really, it's been amazing. They've been great thought partners and they really helped.
If they're going to go on one of our board's lists and we're going to, you know, mix them in with everything else, if they look like they got something off, right?
Yeah, we'll get something too.
Thank you. Well, we have a word smithing, so don't worry. Thank you, we'll be wordsmithed, so don't worry about this piece of paper. I'll give it to you in a minute.
This is like, this is the director who isn't here and so she wouldn't have the papers.
Right, right. But I will, I will email this official list to you to clump together and rank. Give me one, two, three, but you can clump them together. Or the ones that you, because I had clumped seven and let them clump their own. And so, okay. Next thing is superintendent evaluation.
I'm happy to take this.
Okay.
If you'd like, just so I, because, because I'm the one who changed the timeline. So, so here's what I'd like to say. I went back through, on September 14th, we talked about my goals and the process and the timeline. Again, on November 18th with Barb Dorn, she went through kind of the do's and don'ts of an evaluation and the MSBA three-step process. Nothing from any of that has changed. And I'll share with you the change of the timeline. On January 21st, but from the beginning, the goals have been the same. The rubric with the standards and the elements that we discussed has been a part of everything that you've seen. None of that has changed. My mid-year evaluation, you had all the materials attached to it with the exact rubric, criteria that you saw in September, that you saw in November, that you saw in January. Here's what changed is I took the timeline that I established from my last district. And I'm not sure if I made an error on it or not, but I, I had a six-week gap between the time I gave you the materials and you were gonna get information back. I had May 5th as the original date. That would've given me 10 months of time. Our learning leaders didn't even come together on that priority work until that week. So I wouldn't have been able to include that. So I didn't do the evaluation as I said in May. As I looked at the timeline, it was off, so I revised it because it wasn't, I wasn't doing it. And, you know. Hopefully you understand that I also wasn't sitting around twiddling my thumbs. I think that, so I changed timeline. And so you still are getting my materials two weeks in advance of when you're gonna meet in a closed session. I believe it gives you ample time, 10 days to review the materials, to determine the process of what you all individually do an evaluation. You get it back to the chair and the vice chair. And then as you come to the closed session, in two weeks, I'll do a presentation publicly. And you'll have the closed session to talk about your feedback. I have artifacts for all of you with evidence of my goals.
Ken, let's take a look at that timeline for...
What is it attached to this?
Well, it was emailed to us last week.
It's, it's, it's...
There you go. And so in the timelines, we review the information and then we fill out our rub, the rubrics. And then it says that you will send your rubric scores to Director Long and me. And here's my wonder. Would you rather send them to Barb Dorn and have her compile them since she's facilitating our discussion in the closed session? Because I think some people have trust issues maybe, but is that exactly what was said? And so she's completely neutral. And so I was talking with her today and I said, is this done? Would you be willing? She said, of course we would do it at no charge, if that is what the board wants. If that's not what the board wants, you can send them to Director Long and me and we will meet and compile it. And so what we will be saying is there was, in this element, it was a 4-4-3-2. In this element, it was whatever. And we will get you back so that we can discuss it in the closed session with the superintendent.
So the timeline is on the, on the, so the first two pages are just my text and then there's the cover page and then on the backside of the cover page is the timeline. Everything up until June 3rd is the exact same. June 3rd replaced a May original timeline. And then I just took the timeline from there. Like I said, that still gives you 10 days to, to review. It'll be a little bit more of a shorter turnaround for Rita and, and Caroline, unless that is exactly like you said, if you choose to have Barb do that. Ultimately then, before the 16th, you'll have some kind of summary document or Barb will create that summary document. And then we'll go into closed session to discuss my evaluation on the 16th. You'll share with me at that time what those summary documents are. And then you've got two weeks until the next meeting to summarize conclusions in a public statement.
And so if we are turning in our rubrics to Barb to get back to us on the 16th, we need to get them to her by the 13th. If we want them back to us before the 13th, we have to get it to her by the... Oh, see, give it to her by the 11th, which will get it back to us by the 13th for this meeting on the 16th. So it depends on if you wanna see what everybody rated before the meeting or then.
So what would be helpful to me here is that, thank you, superintendent, for sharing your thoughts and this information. What would be helpful to me is, first of all, just trying to put this into some context of how we've done evaluations in the past, so I could just get my own mind around this. This is a lot of information. And historically, the superintendent has provided, developed their artifacts and handed them separately. I can't tell from looking at this right at this moment if this is all integrated. You know, because so that's...
You could ask me.
Well, I, I'm just sharing with her what my thoughts are.
I just, if you had clarification, I'd...
You know, I'm never shy about asking.
No, I just, I just don't want you to be confused with how it's laid out.
Yes, I, okay. You know, but I was just saying, so because in the, what we've done in the past is, and agree, that's why I was so surprised. Because in the past, it's been a kind of a conversation between the superintendent and the board of directors about how it was going to go. And we kinda knew some stuff already from working with Barb, but I haven't seen or talked to Barb since then and we haven't had our meeting that we typically would have. That, that, that was it. So I was surprised when I saw revised. If we haven't had a meeting, when do we meet? You know, so that was the genesis of my questions. Now, and so I am asking you now, you know, so I just wanted to share that with Rita. Because, you know, I mean, it seemed like...
This is laid out, this is laid out exactly as my mid-year was. It's laid out.
So this first part, you've got your cover memo.
Yes, yes, and then the timeline. And then what, what you'll see is each of the goals and underneath each of the goal area are the rubric and the standards that you'll be rating. Underneath that for each goal is all of the evidence. And that's how it works through each, each one.
And yet, the only reason I brought it up is we have two new directors and so for them to get a packet like this and not have any opportunity for the board to go through it, that was, that was all I asked.
And if he was there at the mid-year, so she would've seen that.
Okay, but I'm just saying, that's all I asked. And, and still relatively, you know, the director who does is... And so you didn't, you didn't go through this and there's my hand, but still at the same time, it's helpful to go through and have, if you have a process that you've used in the past, I believe in using the process. And actually, the superintendent's evaluation is a shared day. It's between the board and the superintendent and I know you know that.
I do know that. And that's why, that's why this is now the fourth, I mean, we, we talked in September. Spent time in a study session in September together, November together, January together, which is more time than I've ever spent in the seventies because I was a superintendent with the board about the process.
And everything else is gone on. It's been lost to me, I'll just be real honest with you. There's been a whole bunch of other drama going on, but it hasn't been talked about the superintendent's evaluation. That's just real. And so now where, where are we starting this thing? So maybe I'll ask for a tutorial and you can walk me through it because this looks like some foreign language, okay?
Happy to.
Okay.
Are you done? Are you done? You have spoken.
Okay.
Yeah, so are we agreeing now who to send the preliminary information to?
Who would you like to send it to? First decide who and then we'll decide the date.
I vote for Barb Dorn.
Yeah, I think that, I think you made a good point about taking out any sort of harshity. And if she's willing to do it.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Yeah, I think that we as school board could do it.
But then we break down into a big fight afterwards, accusing each other of, this is what was said, this wasn't what...
Me and I haven't broken out into a fight when we work together about stuff like that.
I don't think they were moving that.
Karen, we need to kick us out the other day.
Okay, I would go, I would, I would go for Barb Dorn doing it because she has a staff of people that will compile it and get the information to us. And it would take Director Long and me hours and hours. And she said that they would do it for free.
Yeah.
It's free.
So what would you say? It's free.
He goes to buy that.
Oh, yeah, any questions?
Okay, okay, then again, that case, it goes to her. I think I would be okay with her bringing back what we said with the numbers that night.
Okay.
That, because that gives us a little more time to work on this lovely little stack of papers. So in that case, we get it to Barb Dorn by June 13th and you will all have Barb Dorn's email because she sent you the video today.
Okay, I'm trusting that, I'm seeing you, I'm trusting.
Okay, well, she said she was going to send you a video today. I watched it.
Anyway, we'll report.
Okay, you will get the video about superintendent evaluation. And I found it very helpful from her point of view. And so you'll get that, so you'll have her email that you can send. We don't have this on a... A document though. How, how will they give us?
Oh, yeah, 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 excellent. Do it as electronic, you can take it.
No, we, let me think this through. What we, we could...
You can scan it.
We, we could, we could create, this is what we could do.
A signed document.
If you had, if you just had the copy, this will do. There's the first copy you saw, if you look at the, the page right after the timeline, the first copy you had was just the goals and the rubric. So why don't we, why don't we resend you just that? So then you can have that over here as you're reviewing everything. That would make a lot more sense than you having to go back into the document after 18 pages to have the rubric. So we'll send tomorrow just the, it's called established goals and standards. It just has the goals and then the standards underneath it. So it's not a two-page document.
In a reading, in a reading.
Yep, yep, that would be right out there, that will be back, yep.
And I would appreciate also, as we're going through this, not only the rate, a space for the rating, any area for comments to trigger.
So where, where would you like that?
I, I, if anybody else doesn't think that's okay, I mean, I think that's...
I'd like each goal or thing. Or in standard, if you can just have a...
With standard. Yep, under your standard, a place for comments.
Right.
Yep, sounds good.
I think that'd be really, yep, makes sense.
So to see any value when we're having a conversation about it? That's a direct question, is that, is that a trick question?
Are you talking about a conversation?
This conversation we just had, you think that was helpful? It was helpful, yeah, if nobody else.
And which is quite...
No, I think it's important.
Well, that's what I thought.
And so...
This was gonna be part of the conversation a whole lot.
What I was thinking was going to happen.
Just a little technical question. I was assuming, but will we each have our own document to work in then?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. And I would say, we'll point, all of this is completely confidential. All of this is completely confidential. It's HR information, it's employee data, and so it cannot be shared. It's only between us and we send it to Barb and Barb brings it back to us, but it's all confidential. Anything I understood on that? Yes.
How are we gonna get our filled out form and compare?
We will get an emailed copy of this.
Okay, so we can both be able to do it electronically.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was just saying, we'll have to do it electronically.
Yeah, we'll have, and so, and so we will have this document filled out and then we will be able to just send that to Barb, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And somebody else have a question on, I mean, we have the support, these are the supporting documents. It's a lot. She was a busy person.
So a lot of work between then and we'll fill out the sheet. If we're going through this and we have questions, can we call you at midnight and be like, no?
You bet you can't. You text me.
I'll call you at 5:00, the next morning. I will answer at 5:00 AM. Oh, just to point out the time and so...
And I, I think we are amazing.
Yes, we are.
I don't see any more hands up? More questions? Yeah, you end up with a question? You need a clarification on a process, I can go with that. You have clarification on the backup data, it's our superintendent? Get it and I will resend the reminder. Okay. When you send the document out, Molly, will you remind them to get it to Barb Dorn by June 13th?
Yes.
Is it end of the day, June 13th? Yeah. Let's be specific.
She wanted it by June 13th.
Well, I'd say end of the day, which wasn't that.
Okay, end of day on 12th.
Then we don't, she'll have it by 13th.
Then they can work, they can work on it.
Midnight, okay.
By end of day, which could be midnight, they, that way they can start working on it on the 13th. All right? Thank you very much, everybody, Richard.
Thank you. That's what my kids do and they, and it's do my midnight and, and school day. So we need to give this...
Makes a difference in your mortgage payment.